All right, I believe we are now live. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us for tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting. I am leading us this.
Deputy Mayor, I apologize, I don't think we're quite live yet.
We are not live.
So that was a good practice run for you there, and only the people in this room know about it.
It's okay. I saw the red light. The mayor told me when light goes red, that's when you know we're going live. Don't trust the indicators, he said. All right, I think we are now live. Everybody, welcome to tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting. This is my first meeting that I will be chairing as the deputy mayor here at the Town of Cochrane. We have a little tradition of passing the deputy mayor role around. I guess it's four months at a time. Each councillor does their part, and I'm honored to be doing it, I guess, I don't know if I'd call that a quarter, but this portion of the year. Before we do anything, I will hit the little gavel here, call the meeting to order, feels very official, and with that, I will look for an adoption of the agenda, a motion for the adoption of the agenda, sorry. Councillor Reed.
What's his name?
Yeah.
Councillor Reed, yes, I'd be happy to move the agenda as presented.
All right, any questions, comments on that? I'll call the question, all in favor of adopting the agenda? It is carried unanimously, and I'll also look for a motion on the adoption of the previous minutes. Councillor Flowers.
As is tradition, I will move that the minutes of October 17th, 2022 are carried as presented.
Excellent, wonderful motion. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, very predictable. I'll call the question, all in favor of approving the minutes? Carried unanimously. And with that, we will move into our first delegation. This evening, the delegation, I believe, is actually coming to us through Zoom. We have Lindsay Joseph speaking with us on behalf of Canadian Tire Jump Start. I'm not sure how this whole Zoom thing will work, but we'll soon find out. All right, take it away. Thank you.
You're good to go, Lindsay.
Perfect. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here tonight with you. I just want to make sure that you can all see my screen. Has that come through? Yeah?
Yep, we're able to see it.
Perfect. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for having me. My name is Lindsay Joseph, and I'm the manager of Inclusive Play at Canadian Tire Jump Start Charities. And I'm here this evening to chat with you all and share a little bit about the Jump Start Inclusive Multi-Sport Court that we are hoping that we can partner with the Town of Cochrane to bring forward in the 2024 calendar year. So I thought I'd start my presentation off today, just sharing a little bit about Jump Start as a whole for those who may not be familiar. So Jump Start's purpose is to enrich the lives of all kids in financial need through sport and play. And we do that in several ways, which I'll talk about here shortly. But our mission generally is through a national ecosystem of partners and collaborators and communities across the nation, and our unique relationship with Canadian Tire Family of Companies, Jump Start creates and supports programs that build better futures for our kids that we work with. And as I said, we do that through a few, just a few ways here. Whether it's our individual child grants, our community grants, which I know some programs in your own community have been fortunate to receive, general partnerships that we have, our Girls in Sport Leadership Program, Inclusive Play Spaces, which I'm here to talk to you about today, our Paresport Fund, our coaching resources, or the research we've been doing in partnership with the University of Alberta, University of Toronto, University of Calgary. We are hard at work across the country and have been since 2005. In that time, we've dispersed over $200 million across Canada through all those different platforms I've just listed for you there. We've created opportunities for play for more than 2.7 million children, and that's growing with every day. And we've supported in the development of over 484,000 square feet of inclusive play space across the country. We recently, as of this year, launched our Play to Lead Girls in Sport Leadership Program, and we've trained over 6,500 coaches and youth activity leaders. So as a whole, Jump Start is really involved in sport and activating sport across the country, regardless of whether it's through a mom and pop at home just trying to help their kid get to into a hockey program, all the way up to the inclusive infrastructure we're here to talk with you about today. So what is being proposed for the Town of Cochrane is a Jump Start Inclusive Multi-Sport Court. A little bit about these courts, just to give you an idea. All of our courts come with kind of four high-contrast colors with white lines to support visual impairment and low vision. We've got shaded double-wide player benches, which I'm kind of pointing here too with my cursor, which allow for ease of mobility for wheelchair, mobility device users, wheelchair users, so that there's lots of space here and shaded space so that those with challenges monitoring or regulating their own internal temperatures have that shade to help them out through their gameplay. We've got wheelchair-accessible roll-up seating and quiet play areas. We've got shaded accessible bleachers outside of the court. So these bleachers allow mobility device users to kind of back right up and into the stands to be a part of the cheering squad or the viewing gallery, if they so please. We've got, within this design, six permanent height basketball nets, four double-wide gate entry points across the space with modified gate entry to support those who might have limited hand or grip functions. On our primary court side, we typically like to have two adjustable height basketball nets available to accommodate any kind of gameplay, introductory or otherwise. It also doubles as a standard tennis net or tennis court with removable posts, and it has sport lines for basketball, tennis, and is easy to play ball hockey with our movable net structures here. On the second side, which you can see where my mouse is now, we typically like to have a court here that provides an adjustable net feature so you can have sitting or standing volleyball. It also functions as a pickleball court as well, and easy to play badminton, sitting volleyball, standing volleyball, really any kind of racket sport there as well. Unique to our Jump Starts or courts, we also have a self-guided play area. And one of the reasons for this is because a lot of children have challenges with the pressure that a traditional structured sport provides, and don't always have the opportunity or aren't always welcome on a court space. So this space has things like our high-contrast four-square, some hopscotch, travel paths with different kind of indicators, whether it's, you know, a wheel track or a footprint, to really show that movement is the target here, just getting out there, moving your bodies and staying healthy, really looking at that active-for-life kind of mentality here. The court dimensions of the space that we're recommending today is about 13,000 square feet. But as always, we're happy to work with the community and kind of work to see what fits best, both within the design and the general footprint of the space. But this is kind of our package that we recommend. Again, happy to move forward with discussions to what works best with the community. These courts with the features that I was kind of indicating to you have been thought out deeply in support with our partnership at the University of Toronto and Faculty of Kinesiology and Physical Education. And work with kind of leaders in play, leaders in inclusion, to really ensure that our courts and our play spaces are designed with every child in mind. These aren't play spaces intentionally just for kids with disabilities. These are places where children of all abilities can come together, play together, and experience the magic of play in all that it brings. And we really tried to make sure that we were working with our partners, ensuring that we were providing play spaces that really spoke to kids of all abilities, regardless what that ability might be. We do look for representation of our branding and recognition at the site. Usually, this comes in the form of logos on the sport court and some kind of signage attached or close by to the court. It's very simple signage. It's basically a welcome sign that suggests, you know, rules of play are, you know, come in, have a great time, and we recognize our donors on this sign as well. You may be familiar with local Canadian Tire dealer Rob Hatch. He is a strong advocate for the Town of Cochrane. He is the one who has spearheaded the interest in Cochrane and building in Cochrane because he cares so passionately about the community, and, you know, really advocated it as a wonderful site for us to start conversations with. So, for example, his name or the name of his choosing will be represented on a recognition sign like this and any other kind of major donors that come to the table. So in short, to sum it up here, we're looking at working with the Town of Cochrane to present up to 13,000 square foot feet of universally accessible design play space. We'll have best-in-class warranties with our vendor partners. We've been working with the same vendors across the country and have found them to be wonderful partners to work with and holding really remarkable warranties, all things considered. And in total, the in-kind contribution that we're presenting you with is valued at $500,000. So again, really looking forward to hopefully working with the Town of Cochrane to build out a play space that is really a remarkable place for children in your community to come together and play at. So thank you very much for your time, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that I can at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your presentation here, Lindsay. Just as a reminder to Lindsay, as well as everybody else in the room, and anybody who may be watching us remotely, as this is a Committee of the Whole meeting this evening, there won't be any decisions coming out of this. This evening is strictly for information and communication purposes only. And with that, I will look to my colleagues on the left and right for questions. First will be Councillor Fadaco.
Thank you, Lindsay. I have to say, congratulations. My kids have, all three of my kids have taken part in Jump Start Day here in Cochrane multiple times, sometimes over the years. It's a great initiative. I've contributed personally to the program. I was just kind of curious about a couple of things as to, obviously, you did address one of them, why Cochrane? I know that we have a good supporter in our community of Mr. Hatch to bring this forward. Do you have a place picked out for this supposed sport park? Or is it something that's still going to be an ongoing discussion with Cochrane?
Thank you. Through the chair to the councillor, thank you for your question. It is definitely something that's still in discussion and not a site selected at this time. So that's all part of the ongoing conversations at this time.
Okay, and I guess only one other question would be whether or not there'll be any ongoing costs when it comes to maintaining the sports field, or is that something that Jump Start looks? In your other initiatives, do they kind of take over if there's any sort of repairs or anything that needs to be done? Is it kind of an ongoing, I guess, maintenance thing of the courts to make sure that everything's functioning in the way that it should?
Thank you, yes, and through the chair to respond there. There are natural, ongoing maintenance costs that would be up to the Town of Cochrane to kind of fulfill as you go. But I will say the warranties that are held on these sites are considerable. And to that end, I would say that if the Town of Cochrane were interested in executing more programming on the sites after the site has been developed, those are the types of things that they could look to Jump Start to support with the funding of. But the gift itself is kind of that one-time offering of the asset at approximate valuation of the $500,000.
Perfect. Well, I think, you know, I don't know many people who wouldn't support an opportunity to receive a great gift like this, especially with how many kids we have in our community. So I look forward to seeing this develop as time goes on.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Is that everything, Councillor Fadaco? All right, I will turn it over to Mayor Junong next.
Wow, okay. Really, all of my questions were asked by Councillor Fadaco, but I just wanted to, at this time, thank Mr. Hatch for being such a great community leader, supporter of this program. As Councillor Fadaco has pointed out, there's been multiple Jump Start Days in Cochrane, so we're not foreign to this idea at all. But to have something like this in our community, I think it's a no-brainer. When we can have a $500,000 asset be pretty much handed to us like this, it's remarkable. So again, thank you to Mr. Hatch for his contributions to our community and being such a great corporate citizen. Thank you, Lindsay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, perfect. Councillor McFadden?
Yeah, thank you very much. What an exciting presentation and amazing offer, and I think a real continuation of, as was identified, Mr. Hatch's, the Canadian Tire and the Jump Starts contribution and, you know, partnership in our community. And as Councillor Fadaco said, you know, Jump Start's been part of my family's recreation as well. So anyway, this is an amazing thing to see. In looking at the presentation on the sports court, what I really find exciting about it is the knowledge that's been brought into it to make it a barrier-free play space and making sure that it can be as engaging for as many people as possible. So that's really exciting. So then my questions are more around, how can we, like, bring this exciting dream to life? So perhaps, one for our staff is, like, is there a site that we've got in mind where we could activate this? And then, secondly, if we do have a site-ready location, how long it would take to bring this dream to life construction-wise?
Thank you, Councillor McFadden. If it pleases the council, we'll bring a report for council or committee in December to discuss some of those challenges.
If I could, I would just.
Very polite, no answer.
If I could augment that, I would just add that in your capital budget, in the draft 23 to 25 budget, there is a capital consideration for 2024 for the implementation of this opportunity.
Okay, excellent. Over to Councillor Wilson.
Great, thank you. I had a series of questions here because it's an exciting project, and my questions are enthusiastic ones, just to gauge how this would actually be implemented and come about, to Jennifer first, or Lindsay first, I'm sorry, Lindsay. I was just curious, if you've, obviously, you've done projects of this kind in the past before. Could you speak to what's the standard cost of something like this? And I had some questions about timelines as well, but I guess we'll start with the, is there a standard cost to a two-court recreation project like this?
Sorry, through the chair to the councillor, thank you for your question. Honestly, it is very dependent based on the location. We have found that, you know, the cost, if we go with a two-court design as you see here, or as you have seen here, the cost of the equipment and the installation and the surfacing and everything included there does come in at around $500,000. The cost for site prep is the piece that varies depending on the location. And I do believe that that's something that your team is working on figuring out, which of the locations, kind of, what they allow and kind of what those budgets come out to. So every, every community has been so different, some with preparation costs as low as $150,000, some that have chosen to build on former landscapes that are more challenging, let's say, have been considerably more upwards of the $500,000 mark for development and for preparation. So it really is dependent on the site itself.
Great, thank you very much. It's a tough question to answer at this stage, I understand. Just a couple of questions about the proposed design that we saw there. I saw evening lights, bleachers proposed, and everything's outdoors. Did I get all that correct?
Yes, through the chair to the councillor, that's correct, yeah. It includes LED lighting that can be set with a timer to ensure that we're keeping with regulations that the city may or may not have. It has the bleachers, it has the shade structures over the bleachers and over the center space of the court. I can actually perhaps go back to, let's see, let's see if it will let me. Here we are. If you can see that there, it does have the bleachers with the shade structures. It has lighting around the court. It has, oops, it has the shade here, it has benches here with the double-wide spacing, and then at least six permanent hoop fixtures. And then, to be discussed with the interest of what the city might have, we have the movable basketball hoops as well.
Okay, great, thanks very much. It's a super exciting project for me. I grew up in this town playing street hockey on most of our streets that were around at the time and getting kicked off our municipal tennis courts. And what a lovely-looking project. It's going to be a great thing for the town, I imagine. Is there, last question, is there anywhere near to us that has a facility like this that's been built that we're able to check out?
Through the chair to the councillor. Thinking about the closest locations to you, it would probably require some travel. North Sanich in B.C. has one of these courts, Thompson, Manitoba, Brandon, Manitoba. Those would probably be the court spaces closest to you, so it would require likely a flight or at least a hardy drive to visit, but they are out there.
Thank you very much, very exciting, and really look forward to hearing more about it. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. Councillor Flowers again?
Great, thank you so much for your presentation. It's a wonderful project. One of the things you mentioned was we're on the short list, so I just wondered what it takes to get bumped up to the chosen one. What would we have to do to ensure we were the chosen one?
Well, sorry, through the chair to Councillor Flowers. From our perspective, you're the chosen one. I think our hope is that you say yes, I think, is ultimately what it comes down to. We would love to partner with the Town of Cochrane to bring this or a design that makes the most sense for the community to your location. So you're on the list in the sense that we're building, we continue to build quite a few of these across the country, but we hope that you will be a part of our 2024 sites.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to more discussion on it. Thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Last to the table in this one. I'm just grateful for the opportunity to be able to see this and recognize that it will be an inclusive play park or a multiple sports park. Recognizing that a lot of facilities over the life of my lifetime have been built for, well, I would say they were not as inclusive as they could have been and should have been. And so I'm glad that this has that. The other thing I would say is that the Canadian Tire Store here in Cochrane has been a really good community partner as well. And so it's nice to be able to see that we're building on that tradition. And so I'm excited about this project as well. Most of the questions, or all the questions that I had, particularly as it relates to maintenance, have been answered, so thank you for your time.
Seeing no further comments or questions from my colleagues, I'll take the opportunity to comment and question myself. First, I'd like to say, as everyone has mentioned, it's great to see this proposal coming forward this evening. It actually has really, it's been nice seeing something like this that's so directly related to Cochrane coming from Jump Start, when I've been seeing Jump Start stuff all over the place, just growing up as a Canadian and obviously going to a huge Canadian Tire all the time. I have a question about utilization. With a facility like this being so unique here in Cochrane that we'd have to drive to, like, Sanich B.C., I think you said, to use it, there must be lots of youth and other people in the whole region who'd want to use this. Does Canadian Tire Jump Start help get the word out across the Calgary region that this thing's here in Cochrane now? Or is it just that it would be built, and then it's incumbent upon us to get the word out there?
Thank you so much for your question, Deputy Mayor. We support in the kind of media outreach of post-build, so we'll support the group that we are working with at the Town of Cochrane at the moment to ensure that your communications team is well-equipped and that we're able to support with kind of the grand opening and communications that may go out across the wire or otherwise. We'll provide, you know, all key messages that are necessary to ensure that that message is loud and clear. You know, this is a site that we really want to have activated. It's been very interesting through our other sites, and apologies for the elaboration here, but I think it's relevant. Each site has chosen to activate these courts very differently. There are some sites that have chosen to keep these sites open for free play at any time with minimal kind of structured activation on the courts. And those sites have been incredibly successful with the amount of use that they're seeing on the sites. One of them actually continues to stay open all night. Their lights never go off. So they're open for use, and they're finding that their crime rates are going down, their engagement from youth is really quite phenomenal in an open kind of structure. Other communities have chosen to provide structured, organized sport time, so running basketball camps, running volleyball programs, running introductory pickleball programs for youth on, you know, Tuesdays and Thursdays, really programming based on the day. And that has worked for their community. So from Jump Start's perspective, you know, we'll really look to the leaders in your Parks and Recreation Department to recommend what the Town of Cochrane needs most. Is it an open and free play space? Is it a place that allows for some structured sport organization? So we really do leave it in your hands. If you require support in funding some of those programs, like I said, always more than happy to accept applications to our community development grants to ensure that you have the funds you need to execute any program that you need to.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Before we move on, I'll just ask if, Lindsay, you have any final comments that you, or anything else you didn't get to say yet this evening?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't. I really thank you all for the time to present, and I really hope to move forward with this project. And I look forward to working with your team and your council moving forward. So thank you so much for your time.
Yep, thank you again. Any comments from administration in closing before we move to the next item?
No.
Okay.
I think we're great. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Seeing none. All right, that is that for that item. There will be no motion coming out of this, so we'll just move right along. Next up, we are going to have Stacy Lowe come to speak to us about the Rocky View County Recreation Cost Sharing Agreement.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, and Council. I'm happy to be here this evening to present to you the information with respect to the Rocky View County Town of Cochrane Joint Recreation Cost Service, Recreation Services Cost Sharing Agreement. For many years, as you probably know, Cochrane and Rocky View County have had a cost-sharing agreement for recreation in recognition of the borderless approach our respective residents have when we're accessing recreation programs, services, and facilities. I should note that there was a typo included in the report on the agenda. The previous agreement that we had expired in 2018, the reports had a typo, it said 2015. But since that time, since 2018, the county has maintained their funding for the jointly-owned Spray Lake Sawmill Family Sports Center as an annual grant of up to $200,000 annually. That is reduced by the debenture payment that is currently still being made. The last extension agreement was negotiated in 2014. That's the one that expired in 2018. And that agreement noted that the county was developing a Recreation and Culture Master Plan that could impact their funding model going forward. In early 2022, Cochrane and Rocky View County committed to a project management plan to draft a new Recreation Cost Sharing Agreement. The project plan was endorsed by our joint IMC noting that Cochrane and Rocky View County have a long history of collaboration and cooperation as municipal neighbors and partners in the provision of service for the benefit of residents within the region. Historically, as we understand it, the county has taken the position that although joint owners of the Spray Lakes facility, their contribution would be based upon their countywide recreation tax levy and allocation process founded upon their Recreation Master Plan and their policies. Further, the county's been opposed since 2014 to any contribution model based on the operating deficit of the facility since the addition of the aquatic and curling facilities. Regardless of the ownership or governance model, Cochrane Administration sought to reach an agreement reflective of usership of the facility, believing the. believing this to be a true reflection of the benefit being provided to county residents. Since that time, our respective administrations have been working to create a framework and funding model. Several models were explored with the team ultimately agreeing upon an agreement that has a bit of a transition. It's important to note that this agreement applies only to operating funding, not capital funding. So separate requests can be made by Spray Lakes to Rocky View County for capital funding dollars. There are, however, no restrictions on how the facility allocates the county funding under this agreement. Currently, tracking users and whether they live within Cochrane or are county residents is not captured consistently. As such, the agreement proposes that from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five, the county will automatically remit a financial contribution to Cochrane based upon a hundred dollars per household with the number of households determined by a defined catchment area. That defined catchment area is consistent and that hundred-dollar contribution is consistent with current county policy. Thereafter, county contributions will be based on the percentage of users that are county residents. The catchment area proposed for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five was established partially by the county's consultant in preparation of the recreation master plan. However, there was an amendment to include Bragg Creek, which is based on the organized sports associations um that operate within the facility and their registrations. This puts the household number within the catchment area at three thousand and four. This agreement will mean an annual contribution of just over three hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollar increase from the previous model. While not reflective of the county's joint ownership based on um, sorry, while not reflective of the county's joint ownership, but based on the data that we do have, county facility use is county resident facility use is approximately fourteen percent. Using the future model um that we're going to transition to, fourteen percent of what Cochrane's annual contribution is, which averages around two point five million, would be about three hundred and fifty thousand. So it's within that range um using the catchment area for now. However, our contribution in that two point five does include capital. Uh, the transition part is that beginning in uh twenty twenty-six, the county will provide their annual contribution based on that facility usage data and the percentage of county users in proportion to Cochrane's annual contribution. This will allow the opportunity to ensure that the data captured um and the systems required for that can be established and agreed upon by the owners. Additional key points in the agreement include that it will continue to allow equal access for all users. Either party can reda- request updated data at any time. Um, it is, as I said, uh not specifically just uh restricted to operating. However, if uh the Spray Lakes operators would like to apply to the county for capital funding, they can do so. Um, new projects, whether that be expansion or replacement or not, part of the agreement. Um, and that uh negotiation of an ownership agreement will begin within six months of the signing of this agreement. Administration does believe the agreement to be satisfactory and will bring it back to council for endorsement on November twenty-eighth. Um, once the agreement is signed, work will begin on the ownership agreement. Um, and just as an update, uh, there is also governance review uh that has been committed to for the facility that is ongoing. So I'm welcome to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, excellent. Thank you for your presentation. Seeing lots of green lights, we'll start with councillor McFadden.
Yes, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Um, yeah, so I'm really excited to see us at this point and I think it reflects a a growing working relationship with the Rocky View County, which enables us to uh all serve our residents better. So that's really exciting to see and I, a lot of my questions actually uh were answered. Um, one of the questions though, and I understood, like, so this is a five-year plan and gives us time to work out the next year five-year plan?
Pardon me, I didn't hear your question.
And gives us time to work out the next five-year plan?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's it's the three thousand and four households as identified in what's mapped out there, which is great. So this this increase is what is already being received by a hundred thousand, which is is uh is great news. Um, and then is there any way, so the twenty-six, twenty-seven to use the actual usage is just waiting on the facility to get that ability to develop the tracking?
Yeah, through the deputy mayor to councillor McFadden, um, the facility is in the process of upgrading their um booking system. And so while that will capture uh residents and users that are coming in um for day use uh or or programs or registering for um passes or buying memberships, it won't capture the organizations that operate in there. So for example, minor hockey. Um, so while they, we will have better data, um, we still have to work out how the um information is going to be captured from those other organizations. But yes, right now it's challenging. Um, it's questionable because uh we're not sure how it's captured, how consistently it's captured. Uh, and so the new program will allow for that consistency and will also allow us as joint owners to have some input on what we want that data to look like when it's reported back.
Okay, yeah, no, that's that's great news, because that was kind of my question is, is what was the capacity of the organization to develop a robust tracking model? Um, but that sounds like it's being worked out anyhow. So yeah, overall, I'm really glad um to see that we're at this point. Um, looks to be a good solution between partners. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up, councillor Fedeckel.
Thank you. It's good to hear that, uh, yeah, like councillor McFadden said, that we're working together. I think it's it's important and I've, you know, having uh heavy municipal partnerships uh is always good. Um, quick question, in councillor McFadden did ask when what happens after kind of twenty twenty-eight. I imagine if there were significant differences, we could go back to the board and kind of renegotiate at that point. I'm sure that's probably one of them.
Absolutely. So there is a renewal option in the agreement that allows for it to be renewed for another five years. Um, but if we were finding ourselves in a place where the agreement needed to be tweaked or uh something wasn't working the way that we had anticipated, um, it can always be amended by mutual consent.
And I imagine that operationally, you know, the board is still going to look after the facility, but is there any risk if if that were to change, say the board does not want to look after the facility and it comes town of Cochrane property? Is there anything that we should know about kind of in regards to that?
I would say that because this is more about um contributing to that ongoing operating and making sure that the county is contributing their share for their residents that are accessing the facility, that wouldn't change. Um, it may change if, for example, uh the amount of funding that Cochrane was providing changed because we became the operator and so suddenly that two point five on average looks significantly different. I would anticipate that there would end up being a conversation between us and uh the county to navigate that.
And one last question, no, no, uh, nothing from them about in terms of, I know we've had the conversation before where their Cochrane residents would have an opportunity to to book first or to kind of utilize that. Is there anything coming from the county that says, you know, they want, I mean, obviously they're they're paying for some residents to use the facility that um we can't blackout and have Cochrane residents go first, anything like that?
Yeah, I would say that the intention and the philosophy and the flavor of the agreement is such that all uh all users, regardless of where they reside, have uh free and equitable access regardless of where they live. Not free, obviously, but they have the same access to it.
Perfect, thank you. I have no more questions.
Okay, next up is uh councillor Reed.
Thank you. Um, well, thank you for your work on this. Um, having had the opportunity to have been part of some of these discussions, or at least most recently, um, wanted to say that I I echo what's been said about how important it is to continue our relationship and and working with our county neighbors. I, in fact, you can't over, you can't over emphasize the importance of that. I think this is a really great first step in terms of uh ongoing discussions about governance and uh operating and capital. So I I think this is is just really a first step for me in terms of that. The other thing that I don't think you you mentioned, but it does, it is in the agreement and was pointed out before is that it also includes the arena, not just Spray Lakes. So uh so I think I think that's a big win, yeah, recognizing that we do have county residents who use that facility as well. So I just wanted to say congratulations. I think this is a is a great move forward, but I I think this is just a first step.
Thank you councillor Reed. Uh, mayor Jang?
Thank you. Um, I would echo what my colleague said, Ms. Lowe, thank you for the work. Um, this has been a long time coming. I think, what do we give notice a year and almost two years ago? Um, so these things move slowly, but I mean, we had reasons why. But uh thank you to you and your team for executing on this. Um, and yeah, I'm happy that we're at this point. Uh, we've been talking about equitable cost sharing of this agreement for longer than the two years that we've, but even getting to the point of giving notice in the first place was a long runway. Um, but I just wanted to speak to the improvement of the political relationship we have with Rocky View County and I I think, I hope that, and I think it has, uh seeped through into administration that um those bonds and that relationship are starting to improve as well. Not that we had a terrible one, but uh we all, I think, identified we needed to do some work on this. So um I'm happy to see that our colleagues, at least politically, are seeing value in uh coming to the table and having good, honest, genuine conversations about the future of our region. Um, and the thing that I like about uh the approach that's been taken in the uh agreement is that it is a transition. Um, you did speak about the software and as the board or the council representative on the board, I can speak that the software was implemented in August of this year and it's just starting now to become uh, well, it's it's being used, but they're still working out bugs and getting things uh uh up to running at the level that they that the software can, uh and then understanding what that data is. So I like that we've built that in already. Um, the one thing I would say is that I appreciate that this is a user pay model as well. Uh, and we're, we remain a borderless system where we're not taking score at the door. Um, where do you live? Uh, this, a two-tiered system is not the environment that we wish to work in. I'm glad that the that this executes on that as well. Doesn't matter. If you live in Montero, you consider yourself Cochrane region and I'm glad that that's how we're delivering on the recreation facilities. So kudos to the team on that one. The last thing I would say is that um, and I brought this up at the IMC, that the one thing I think we still need to work with with Rocky View is this is our facility and not just, I don't I don't mean ours as in Cochrane, I mean ours as in the regions. Um, Cochrane and Rocky View County own this jointly at this time. Uh, we're still kind of working out how much of each of that and how that will look in the future. But uh um having them use that language, I think, will be the beginning of me understanding that they're getting it. Um, they're still not quite there, but uh if they're if they're listening tonight or if the papers pick this up, I I would really like to start to talk about this in the terms of that this is our community facility that we're delivering together with Rocky View County. But yeah, thank you for your work. It's good, good to be at this point.
Thank you, mayor Jang. Uh, Pat Wilson, councillor Wilson, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, two, two quick questions, most of mine were answered here. One was about uh, I like what what I'm seeing with operation, like we just talked about the user pay model. Uh, if I understand, we went up about a hundred thousand dollar funding over last year, is that about correct?
That would be correct.
Budget, thank you. And so my my main, I'm I'm pretty satisfied of the way I see us going operationally. This seems like the reasonable solution and um and thanks to Rocky View County for working with us on it. I just had one question to the mayor, I guess, if um, is it just, is it just uh Mr. Mayor that's on the IMC committee now? Or do we still have another councillor there? Okay, so to to anyone that wants to speak to it, um, I'm I'm somewhat concerned about what I see with capital funding moving forward. I know that's something that I think the mayor is just talking about that needs to still be dealt with. Um, do we, do we have concerns amongst our committee that we're we're not moving um where we need to be on the capital funding side of things? Or do we have optimism that that's going to come in the future? I just, as an outsider, I wanted to hear more about the capital funding side. Yeah.
I can say that it's being worked on and like um Ms. Lowe said, it'll be within the next few months. It's the next piece of the project, so we can't really speak to it yet, but we're hoping they'll have a win there as well. Um, and my final, are we finished?
I just, I could add to that. Yeah, thank you for the question, councillor Wilson. Um, we did talk about that at IMC. The capital remains a a large expenditure of this facility. Uh, Rocky View County did admit that that is obviously an ongoing concern they wish to be partners in. Um, the rec board has identified a long-term strategy uh of what capital needs to be addressed and how much roughly in the next few years. So that's no secret. Uh, how we get to that, I think, is going to be work with our administration team, but uh Rocky View County were willing partners and they said uh they understand they are partners with other communities on facilities like this. Uh, and these capital requests come all the time, so please just make a request and they will deal with it accordingly. It's not a done deal, but it's uh, they understand that that the conversations need to happen.
If a large capital ask comes upon us that we don't foresee, if the the roof caves in or the ice plant fails or right now it's just a negotiation, it's not, we don't really have a a system or or a setting to figure out who pays for the entirety of it. Right now it's us and we we go to them with an ask, if I understand?
Well, I think the first question would be to the board. The board does have some reserves and they do uh budget for these types of things. If it was a large catastrophic failure like you're outlining, that would be something we would certainly go to our partners and say, hey, we need to pay for this joint. Uh, in my opinion, I don't know.
Historically, if I can add, um, when there have been significant capital expenditures, what happens is they put forward a request to Cochrane and they put forward a similar request to the county. Um, it does have to go through the county process. They do have um set timelines. It is one of the things that this agreement, at least from the operating funding, gets outside of is that the facility um does not have to make application to the county every year and meet the deadlines to actually get the funding from them for operating. I do anticipate, or I I do hope that um having an updated and signed agreement with respect to ownership will help resolve some of the um who is responsible for life cycling and replacing and repairing this asset, which is jointly owned. Um, so that's definitely one of the goals of that.
Great, yeah, thank you. Thank you to administration for getting us here and the committee members for working away on this. It's really important, obviously, this is a large budget item and I'm eager to see where the capital side of it goes moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wilson. Uh, your comments, councillor Flowers?
Final question. Um, in the notes, it mentions the final debenture payment next year. Does that mean the whole thing's paid off?
Twenty twenty-three is the last year for that debenture payment, so the facility would get the full um funding that from that point forward. It's about forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, that's that reduces from that funding. Um, so going forward, they would have the full three hundred thousand dollars.
That's a good news story in itself. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Flowers and to you councillor McFadden.
Um, thank you. So I just wanted to get some clarity on how the old arena fits into this story. I know a lot of what we're talking about is is the Spray Lakes, you know, facility that we all think of, but um as I understand it, the old arena is also under the management there and I just wanted to make sure that its operations and capital are also considered and as we're finding solutions.
Yeah, so I apologize for that a hundred percent. So in the um, in the original agreement, so the agreement that we have with the board, the Spray Lakes Sawmill Family Sports Center board, uh, that agreement defines the facility as being both the S L S F S E as well as the Cochrane Original Arena. So when we speak about uh the facility or Spray Lakes, it is actually no different than if the Cochrane Original Arena was located on the land right beside. Um, it is considered to be just part of it. So the capital um life cycling report that they presented to council, I think, two years ago now, um, that they had prepared, uh, that includes the facility that uh is the Cochrane Original Arena. So it speaks to the life cycling of that as well.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor McFadden. Any further questions or comments? Uh, seeing none, I would like to ask a couple of questions. Uh, with regards to the catchment area, is Harmony in that area?
It doesn't extend quite as far uh to Harmony. Harmony, what their um consultant found, um, from what they um, when they were doing their recreation master plan, the majority of Harmony goes to Calgary. So they're not coming to Cochrane. So it wouldn't, it, even if there were a couple of postal codes perhaps caught in someone accessing the facility, it wouldn't be enough to trigger um including that in the catchment.
Okay, um, it's great seeing this moving forward. Uh, I obviously wouldn't propose anything that would shake up the negotiations in a way uh that would slow it down for moving forward. It would be nice in the future if we could get some of Harmony in. I don't know if there's ever, was there any consideration of doing different tiers of catchments, like uh a fifty-dollar per household for a place like Harmony where there's less uh utilization?
There was a lot of discussion about the catchment area, um, specifically because it was originally developed for the county's purposes by their consultant, raw data captured by a county consultant. Um, and obviously their preference is to be consistent with their adopted recreation master plan. Um, that was challenged absolutely by our team consistently. Uh, the one thing that we did was we did get as much raw data from the facility that we could with postal codes. That's how we got portions of uh Bragg Creek Incorporated. Um, we did push to also include um a greater area to the east, so to include Bear's Paw. But the data didn't support that, at least the data that we could capture. So in the future, when we transition to user pay, um, it's quite possible that what will happen is that's going to capture that in the percentage of county resident users uh more accurately than using the da- the catchment area for the first couple of years. What the catchment area allows us to do is get an increased contribution reflective of at least what their consultant um found when they were doing their surveys and then uh give the facility the opportunity to gather the um data in a way that's going to be acceptable by the joint owners for the contribution. So that's absolutely why we wanted to transition to that user pay.
Okay, excellent. Uh, thanks for your answer. Seeing no further green lights, I'll ask if you have any closing remarks, anything you didn't get to say yet?
I do not. Uh, council can expect this to come back to their November twenty-eighth council meeting. I do not. Uh, council can expect this to come back to their November twenty-eighth council meeting, uh, to pass formal resolution to adopt.
All right, excellent. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Are we good to do a more item before people need a break? We're good? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Uh, Mr. Drew Heinman will be speaking to us about the innovation space programming. Over to you, Mr. Heinman.
Uh, good evening, Deputy Mayor, uh, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be here, uh, this evening, uh, before you to share some information on the innovation space programming. Uh, really wanted to start here tonight. Uh, I did share, uh, email with you early to, earlier today, and I know that, uh, we'll be at, uh, Cochrane Crossing in the station tomorrow for the ribbon cutting, and talking about, uh, how it's meeting a number of your strategic objectives, including identity, providing an open space, livability, connectivity with the crossing of the railway tracks. But really what we're here to talk about tonight is vibrant economy and your strategic objectives in that regard. And more specifically with tech businesses and the, uh, innovation component of the space. So what I'm looking for tonight from you is to make sure that, uh, what administration is proposing for that space is in alignment with, uh, council and your desires for that. So I'll be coming back to that a little bit later. Um, this is the building itself. Uh, I think, uh, a number of you are quite familiar with, uh, the different spaces within the building. We've got the Cochrane Information Center, our administration portion. There is that blue portion. That is our sacred space. That is our innovation space. So that's really going to be the focus of much of my presentation. We have the blue, uh, portion. Those are our two community boardrooms, um, which are part of the space as well. There, so on the left, you would see the, uh, innovation space, the boardroom. Uh, it's possible to have two boardrooms in there or a single large, uh, boardroom. It makes up of, these two areas make up about three thousand square feet, dedicated to some specific objectives within this building. And those objectives really are quite, quite specific. This is a business hub for our community. We're focused on job creation and, as I said in, uh, the introduction, the, uh, vibrant economy and meeting that strategic objectives. So some of the overall objectives is increase the development of new businesses, job creation, employment, uh, within the specific, uh, sectors that align with current, uh, Cochrane's current industries being tech industry. So we really see this specific, to job creation and tech. Um, uh, to create and foster an entrepreneurial climate that aids in the diversification of the local economy, attract funding and investment opportunities for new and existing companies in Cochrane, execute business education and programming that provides support and resiliency for the business community, and ca, solve Cochrane's specific problems and challenges through innovation. So the inspiration for this, uh, the inspiration came from, uh, the Velocity Garage, that is on the Waterloo campus, uh, or excuse me, in Waterloo, Ontario. Um, it's been running for a number of years as it shows there. It's, uh, they help high potential entrepreneurs grow, and scale up their businesses into world-class businesses. In terms of some of the specific numbers, what Velocity Garage has been able to accomplish, uh, I'm not sure if everybody can see on there, but there's four point two billion dollars in funding raised to date. There's over five thousand jobs that were created by Velocity alumni companies, and there's over four hundred, uh, companies incubated since two thousand and eight. So if we can do a fraction of this, as we're starting to get out of this space, we're making a significant accomplishment and, obviously accelerating things in our own community. Here's some, uh, pictures. Uh, some members of council have had an opportunity to attend this. This is an old tannery, very simple building. Uh, but what it, it, what it's done is exceptional, and I think you can see that from the, uh, the numbers, uh, that I just, uh, shared with you a few moments ago. But some of the different elements, obviously it's a flexible workspace. You can see the tape on the ground. I think that's very important, is there's defined areas where different businesses, are really growing, they're interacting. Um, here's some of the different, uh, ideas. There are spaces to connect, build and grow. Um, if you look down the hallway with the lockers, that's very similar to our space that has been created. There's, uh, breakout rooms. That's something that's similar. I wanted to share this too, whereas there's the, uh, blue individual businesses that are, scattered throughout the space at Velocity Garage. We see something very similar in our space, um, when it grows. And then, uh, the mayor did, uh, take an opportunity to share this, uh, that is on the side of one of the walls and, and what I wanted to share, you probably can't see it, as well, but it says, this is your Everest and it's where you start and you have your idea, and then you're moving forward as your business and there's a chasm. And you probably can't see it, but the little characters have an opportunity where they get wings or a cape and are able to make that jump. And that's what this space is all about, being able to make the jump and become a full-fledged business, leaving the, uh, innovation space, relocating in Cochrane, growing your business, and contributing to our vibrant economy. So that's really the vision for this. So where do we start? So we start, and our starting point will be the Technology Business Residency Program. So, um, just one moment. So this is envisioned to be a twelve-month, uh, residency program for startups. Uh, they're going to have access to office space, the boardrooms that are adjacent, high-speed internet during business hours. And we're going to have specific business, uh, or programs to aid business growth. They'll also have access to business advisors, and connections to our growing local tech business community. Startups will apply to be part of the program. An advisory committee will, uh, determine membership and exit timing from the program. So that advisory committee is going to be made up of members of our business community as well as our economic development office. There will be a cost of the program of two thousand dollars. That's to ensure that, uh, these businesses, uh, and proposed startups, have an investment in this. Uh, there is also an option to extend, um, six months beyond the one-year term. So there's going to be different opportunities as well, where there's face-to-face mentoring, matching, um, it's really about creating those collisions. We've talked about this in the past, and really building capacity so these can be successful businesses. So that's one aspect. That's that sacred space, that, uh, uh, innovation space that we're, uh, specifically referring to. But there is other components to this that we want to talk about as well. And that's the Smart Start Program. So Community Futures in Cochrane, uh, I happen to be on the board of that, uh, organization as well. And there is a, uh, a very successful program called Smart Start that operates in communities, uh, throughout Alberta. And it's really the, uh, the whole concept behind this is, um, to, uh, partner, uh, different businesses who are, uh, starting with a mentor and a team of entrepreneurs who are going to help you, through the development process of your business. And this isn't just specific to tech. So we have the incubation, or excuse me, the innovation space where it will be tech-focused. In the boardrooms, there's also the opportunity where we'd be running a Smart Start program that would support a large range of different business types as well. As I said, it's been a very successful program. We initially, uh, purchased Smart Start, uh, from Community Futures in two thousand and nineteen. However, we have not, uh, proceeded, uh, with this through the pandemic for a number of reasons. Uh, but the intent is in twenty twenty-three, it will run out of the bor, uh, boardrooms. It's an eighth-month program. We'll take eight to ten entrepreneurs, each with a mentor. Um, they will have access to the boardrooms and other areas such as the, uh, information center, to provide workshop programming. There's a fee of a three hundred dollars for, for each entrepreneur to join the program. And then, uh, s- smart starting, uh, program is for any business venture, not just tech. And then, uh, residency program, uh, members will also be allowed the opportunity to participate in Smart Start as well. So it's really, uh, about that business networking opportunity to make business thrive in our community. One of the other aspects that, uh, we've talked about is boardroom rental. Uh, so there's a lot of, uh, I'm sure you have a lot of questions around this. The intent, again, going back to very business, uh, focused, uh, nature of this building itself, is to allow business groups to utilize the boardrooms for business-related programmings. So again, it has to meet specific parameters. It cannot just be any group looking to rent this facility. Uh, nonprofit organizations providing training or events to the business community will not be charged. However, for-profit organizations will rent the boardrooms at a cost. Um, they'll be available during business hours, Monday to Friday, from eight thirty to four thirty. Uh, this is part of the program you will see in the budget. Um, coming up next week, we've only planned for this for current, uh, uh, business hours. We don't have, uh, the capacity at the, at this time to go beyond those, uh, current business hours. Um, uh, groups that apply to use the space that do not fit the municipality's objectives will be encouraged to use alternative spaces within the community. Now, in terms of the program itself and the various phases, it is a phased approach, uh, to ensure program success and the, uh, appropriate resources. So phase one is envisioned to be November until June twenty twenty-three. And we would be looking at branding the innovation space and the Technology Business Residency Program. Uh, create an online presence for the program and application process. Build the advisory committee made up of six to eight community leaders. Connect with the business community to encourage and support, provide opportunities to engage startup communities. We would also start accepting applications and create a process for community boardroom bookings, as well as a, uh, process to launch Smart Start. Phase two, which is anticipated to be next summer until December twenty twenty-three, is to evaluate the ability for the community to use space outside of regular business hours. Determine staffing requirements and costs associated for the twenty twenty-four budget process. Build a standard operating procedure for the use of building after hours. Provide council with an update on the success of the programming at the station. So very similar to what we've done with the, uh, land use bylaw has come back with that reporting, uh, so council can have, uh, clear line of sight on the success of our, uh, programming within this space. And ensure that the phases coincide with the town's operational budget process. Finally, the resources, uh, resourcing of this is important. Economic development is intended to, uh, manage the first phases of the programming. Uh, as the, uh, program expands, uh, we had previously had discussions with council about the needs for, perhaps an executive director, uh, to, to manage, um, this program. Uh, there will perhaps be needs for, uh, business advisor in the future as well. That concludes my presentation. My only question of council returning to where I started, uh, is, is this in alignment, uh, with council's vision for this? And if you could provide some feedback, that would be much appreciated. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Thank you for being here. I'm sure everybody has lots to say. Uh, let's start with Mayor Junong, who I noticed, turned his light on just as your presentation started. Knew he had lots to say.
I never get the opportunity to put a light on, so, um, the first, well, the answer to your question, Mr. Heinman, is almost, uh, from my perspective. Um, and I think it's important, we, we chat about where we've come from to how we've gotten here today. Um, we started with a vision for a three-story building with grandiose plans of having a huge incubator space and maybe, room for other tenants, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we all know how and why we got to where we are today. Covid got in the way of a good plan. Um, we restricted and retracted on our budgets and spending, and we went back to grant-funded-only building, which is what we have today. And I want to say hats off to you and your team and Greg for delivering that building. It's fantastic. The look and feel of that Velocity Garage, you can almost feel it when you walk through the, uh, the, the station there, so, um, knocked that right out of the park. I think, uh, our team nailed that, so thank you for that. Uh, and tomorrow's the, uh, official opening, so that's, uh, that's great, right? Um, I am though unhappy with how we got here today. Um, I had hoped that this work had been done, six months ago, a year ago. Um, those pictures were taken in twenty nineteen. The vision I thought was pretty clear at that time. Um, I'll own some of that. Maybe the vision wasn't quite as clear as what it could have been. I think we're getting there. Um, to me, I don't, as we've gone from a three-story building down to, I think the innovation space is about two thousand.
Correct?
Yeah. Um, so I, and I, I'm really happy you used these words, um, Drew, in your report, um, sacred space. It's small. We need to be super deliberate in what we're doing with that space, in my opinion. We need to have a clear, uh, criteria and plan and how we're going to utilize that space and what for, uh, in order to deliver on it. In the, at least in what I thought the vision was when we started. I don't think we need a residency, like, calling it residency program, I gue, I guess you could say it's an incubator. I, I would rather use that, that language. That's a very small thing, and I'm not being critical of that. Um, but having an advisory committee, um, telling us what we want in our space rather than the town and our organization directing what that is, in my view, is, uh, that's, we don't need to go that far. This should be us driving this in what we want to see this in, in this building, and what innovation and technology do we want to drive on the outside of this? Um, the complete vision, right from the beginning, was that we were going to be building our own economy in Cochrane from the ground up. And this is that, and I'm glad you had that visual on there, uh, Mr. Heinman, about the, the chasm. Um, that is the innovation space program right there, is to help that, that entrepreneur go from an idea, in their, in mom's basement or in a garage, and take it into a, an innovation center where they have access to boardrooms, lockup space, um, bumping shoulders and rubbing elbows with other like individuals. I think that the program you suggest tonight accomplishes some of that, but, um, to me, I think it's short-sighted and is, um, it misses the mark. We need to be more deliberate in what we're asking. We need a clear outline of what types of businesses that we will allow in there. There should be a number of employees, employees capped. This should be one of the criteria. We can't, we couldn't accept a, a business that has a hundred employees. We don't have the room for it, for example, and I'm being dramatic with my number. Um, maybe it's a revenue plateau. These aren't things that I think we need to, you know, be able to lo, land on the moon for. It's clear criteria that I think our staff, uh, have the ability to, uh, implement without going outside and asking the, the community for. Um, and I'm not suggesting the community doesn't have the knowledge. We have great tech, um, success stories in our community already. I think we could leverage those in other ways and not through, uh, a committee. Um, the other one could be time. Um, I see this as a twelve-month program today. I don't know if that's enough for a business to get off the ground. Um, I would suggest it should be around it too. And I, I don't have all these answers, but I think we could click on, uh, Velocity Garage's website and find some of these pretty, I was on there last night, and you can fill out the application process and begin. Um, my hope is that we don't rush this. Um, we resist the urge, maybe from some in the community to open up this space and start it to, generate revenue. I think that time has passed. We're not going to have the program in place right when we open tomorrow. That's clear. So let's, uh, paper the windows and say coming soon and create a little bit of, uh, um, energy around it and optimism about what it could be. Get our program set, and be clear on what it is that we're trying to deliver to the community. And then all of us around the table can know what it is and speak to it well. I think we've, we've left too many questions that have been unanswered in the community, and people are starting to answer them on our behalf, which is a dangerous space to be in, and I think we're, now we're playing catch-up. So, this is a great news story. I don't want it to sound like I'm all doom and gloom here tonight. We have two thousand square feet that I think we need to, to cherish and, and remain, um, you know, guarded on how we're going to release it. Because if we release it and we're not quite sure, um, it's going to be eroded and picked away at from other needs in the community that this was not intended to serve. And I fear that we're going to have to be going backwards to try and get it back, if we ever get it back. So, um, it's my long way of saying I think we need to not go back to the drawing board. I think we're close. Um, I like the idea of the Smart Start program, but that's not what this space was identified for. It's a, and, and I get that, uh, economic development was working on this already. Um, they're going to be housed there, so therefore they're going to be working this. I, I love that program, but we have to be careful in my mind that we don't allow, um, others into this space without, really clearly defining what it is that we want. Um, tech is a broad brush of what that might be. I think that's a good place to start. Um, Mr. Derekot and I met with Garmin last week. We had a preliminary discussion about this space. Um, and I asked the question, would, uh, if we said wearables, um, Garmin Watchen is obviously a wearable, would, if we- Would if we just drew a circle around wearables as the technology that we would allow in this space, would that be competed with them? And they answered, no, um, we welcome that. We want that critical mass of those types of businesses in our community to help drive um jobs, um raise their profile in the tech industry globally around Cochrane. So we might want to be that specific with what we design this space for. So I hope I'm being clear in in my ask of council, and that is, let's, let's not rush to open this. I think the other side, the Visitor Information Center and all the other functions the building was designed for, everyone's clear on, and that's awesome. Let's go ahead. Tomorrow, we're cutting ribbons, but the innovation side, I think we need to spend more time and get that right. But is that, that's enough?
Uh, no.
I'll back away from the microphone. I'm pretty passionate about this. I like I, we went out there twice to do some research on on this aspect of what this building could, or what the first building could be. And the innovators in our community were quite energetic around and shared freely with me what they thought the vision that we all had about this space was. They, they're starting to lose interest because they feel we've lost our way. Um, that saddens me that we're, we have people who have actually done this very, very well in our community, started a business in their garage and turned it into Garmin Canada. Um, that is the ultimate Everest in that one picture. If we could even just mimic a little bit of that again, this whole space would pay for itself in one business. So I think we, again, we want to really be clear in how we're starting and taking that first step. Now I'll stop talking.
Thank you for your very thought-provoking comments, uh Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it over to Councilor Reed.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I had two comments and a couple of questions. Uh, one was, I am really excited about a tech incubator, and I don't know if that's the term you use, but I like the idea of the incubator. And then having had the opportunity to visit the Waterloo site, I, I was impressed by the incubator idea. The thing that really surprised me about the incubator in Waterloo was the synergy that existed between the tech entrepreneurs and the success that they had. I had kind of envisioned that, you know, somebody would come up with a technical idea and then want to keep it to themselves, but there, the energy in that room. Well, there is some division in terms of what people do, and there are some secreties about it. Uh, the, the synergy between groups was really, really cool, and so I, I just make that as a comment. Three questions I had were, were actually quite similar to the mayor's. Um, when this came forward just uh recently, uh that is the Innovation Hub, I was kind of shocked that, that about where we were at with the programming and and um, you know, when, when people in the community asked me about it and I kind of explained what I, you know, what I know of it, what I thought our vision was. It seems to be different than what uh what members of the community think, not because they, I think it's because a question of not knowing, right? Um, you know, I, I think we have um a limited space. I, like, two thousand square feet isn't very much. And uh I, like the mayor, think it needs to be really deliberate about what we're going to do with that space. I, my fear was that, again, Smart Start is a great program, other like programs are great, but I was afraid that they would be, that space would be consumed by those programs. Um, and that wasn't, I, that clearly wasn't the intent of, at least from my perspective, what we wanted to achieve there. The question I had, the two questions I had or comments I had was, um, the people in in Waterloo seem very accommodating in terms of being able to share their experiences, and I'm wondering if we, if we picked up on that in relation to program structure, experiences as a startup. Um, you know, even the advisory committee, I mean, who would be on there? I noticed when we were there in Waterloo that there were a number of um external sources that were supports to these, these entrepreneurs. Like there were, there were lawyers there, there were bankers, there were um, you know, a number of people. But I don't think there were any advisory committee. I think they were actually external resources that were available to these entrepreneurs. So I just wondered if there was some experience that we could pick up on from our friends in Waterloo. And again, I, I think they were very accommodating in terms of being able to provide information and advice, talk about their first couple of years of this, um that we might hone in on in terms of using that. Again, two thousand square feet is not a lot of space. And, and so while I hadn't really thought about putting hold on it uh until we get it right, but I do believe that we need to be very deliberate about what we're doing in that space. Um, and like the mayor, I'm not sure that we're quite there yet, at least given what I heard the previous meeting and this meeting today.
Um, I can comment on uh some of the connections. Uh, Mr. Corman was unavailable uh this evening, but I know he's had uh a number of conversations with Platform Calgary, uh so their innovation space. Um, we've had some conversations with uh a party with uh Innovate Cochrane, who is uh did some of the work at the UFC where there was an innovation space there as well. Um, I would have to confirm, I believe he's had some uh preliminary conversations. He was involved when uh, I believe he, he went on the trip to uh, or was it Greg, who went on the trip to uh Waterloo as well? So I hear council's uh feedback in terms of refining this to and, and we should be further ahead than uh we are at this point, but again, uh we want to put this in the best pace, uh space to be successful.
Okay, uh Councilor Fedeck.
Thanks for the presentation. I was lucky to actually attend a board meeting uh in the new space, and it's, it's an amazing building, so I'm excited to be at the ground opening tomorrow. Um, I was kind of curious, and I do agree with the mayor in saying that if um we, we need to kind of slow it down and and really be deliberate and who's going to use the space, because obviously one of the questions that I had is there have been community groups, um obviously whether or not promised or suggested or uh took it upon themselves to think that, you know, they were also going to have ownership within that space. I'm just curious to make sure that there's, there's no friction within the various different groups that kind of assumed, hey, you know, I'm, I'm going to be coming in.
Yeah, um, Mr. Derikot and myself have had several conversations with a number of different groups. Uh, needless to say, everyone's excited about this space, but in terms of ownership, it is the town's uh ownership of this space. We will be driving uh the programming and how this functions. Uh, the intent of this evening was to come and just make sure that we're aligned with council. Um, you know, again, I'm getting the sense that there is some additional work in terms of refinement that needs to be done. Uh, certainly acknowledge that and and look forward to uh doing that, but I think this is important feedback and perhaps something we should have been doing a bit earlier. Uh, but needless to say, we're excited about this and the uh the benefits it'll bring our community. But uh we've addressed any of the uh uh concerns with any of those groups. Councilor Fedeck.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the other thing, and I know that this is probably very preliminary, much more of a Phase Two type of idea, but I might be curious to see kind of what that revenue aspect looks like, even for I like renting out the front foyer or for Christmas parties or private functions. Just I think there's a real revenue portion to that that could happen. And I mean, tech to me, maybe going forward, obviously Phase One, we just want to open the doors at some points and get the right people in there. But tech to me, I don't know if it would be like an eight-thirty to four-thirty kind of mandate, so whether or not there's an option to do like swipe cards or, or something that would allow some of these um businesses perhaps to come in in an after-hour scenario uh so that they could work on their projects uh in as long as obviously, you know, there's, there's rules and, you know, perhaps, you know, what are not costs to kind of maintain or, you know, clean up the building, but I think it's, it's all things that are still coming. And so um I appreciate the fact that we're going to kind of, you know, open, pause, think, and then carry on, because I think those are, uh rather than opening it and then trying to get the wrong people out, I think it's better to just stop and take a breather and make sure that we're doing it the right way from the beginning. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Fedeck. Uh, Councilor Flowers.
Okay, I have a whole bunch of stickies here, and I don't think I can ask all the questions, but I did re-watch the um previous presentation that we had in the spring last night. So I had a lot of questions around that, and one of them was about not being open in the evening, because we've talked right from the beginning about being accessible in the evening. And it doesn't take people to be in the building if it's set up properly. So I always thought that we were going to have some kind of a key card system where we could book it out and have people use it in the evening, but that's not in place yet.
Uh, Councilor Flowers, no, that is not in place. Uh, again, uh our preliminary uh plans was to have the building operational during business hours, uh not in the evenings. That would be some uh additional budget implications that we'd have to uh review and prepare.
Again, that wasn't said in the spring update, so I re-watched the whole thing. Um, I think mostly it aligns with part of our vision, but I disagree with the mayor about the advisory committee. I think it would be really helpful to have some people that have done this kind of work and have a big vision to be advisors. We're still the town. We can still determine what goes in there, but I think advice is, it would be excellent. Um, and some of the partnerships that we already have in place, I don't hear anything about, like tourism. Are they going to be housed in the building?
Uh, through the Chair to Councilor Flowers, the intent would be uh that tourism, Chamber of Commerce, Innovate Cochrane would have access to the boardrooms uh to do some of their programming, not the Innovation Space. I'll use my words that I used before, that yellow area here is sacred space, so and, and there is a specific intent for that. But um there's also landing spots in the admin offices um where tourism could come in perhaps an hour before. Uh, you know, have a phone call in one of the uh private rooms and then go across the hall uh to the boardroom to have some uh programming and things of that nature. Um, uh or, or have a meeting. Um, so there's opportunities for them, but they don't have a designated space uh per se.
Yeah, I just think it's important that the partnerships we already have, we don't lose sight of and that we strengthen them. Um, I did re-watch our last uh update from tourism, and I don't think we've quite followed through on everything that they asked for that we were looking into the future for, so we just don't want them to get lost.
No, and I, I would reflect on the uh strategic plan and intentional relationships, and that's absolutely a commitment that we have made and and council has directed us to make. Uh, so these partnerships are important, but just how they function within the building, I think, is a really critical component of that as well.
So when we look at Phase One, I did think that most of that work was already done, so I was too surprised that we're just starting with Phase One. Um, and I always thought we were starting all kinds of businesses in the incubator, not just um in um tech businesses. Did we talk about doing other businesses as well?
I think uh as this has evolved over a number of years, there has been some different discussions. Uh, initially, if we go back to even the three-story, it was very much a tech incubator uh that we had envisioned. Uh, and again, as uh, as time went on, there were uh some discussions about, well, let's broaden this, uh especially going through Covid. But uh, you know, I would agree with the mayor in using the uh, you know, his words would be, it, it's very hard to pull back once we've made that overture. So I think having it uh very narrow and 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 defined uh would be to everyone's benefit at this point.
I can see um focusing on tech because it is really important, but there's lots of other important ones too, so.
And, and that's where I think from our, our administration's perspective and Mr. Corman, uh who, you know, I, he, he wished to be here, but he had a previous commitment um was that's where Smart Start uh provides some different opportunity where there would be some programming that could occur in those boardrooms and assist those businesses.
That's all I can ask for now, but I might send Mr. Corman a few questions too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Flowers. Uh, Councilor McFadden.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much. Um, so I also have kind of a, a contrary opinion to the growing theme here. Um, I like the, the Smart Start approach. And um I think as, as a few folks know, I'm currently working on my MBA with an innovation focus. And so, and so there's some subtleties in the language we've been using that I think have allowed us all to kind of get lost in our expectations. Um, some of us were thinking this was like a tech startup hub, some of us, you know, more broadly. Um, and then I was landing in a happy space of, of an innovation hub where that innovation could be, could be anything. It didn't have to necessarily be tech. It could be, you know, a business innovation, a social innovation, just a way of being innovative. So that's where I was landing in my head, so it's fairly good that we're having this conversation, because I think we've got about eight different opinions above seven people. Um, so, yeah, so I, I'm worried about being prescriptive. Like, we do need to be, you know, this is the town's building and to set that. But I would worry about setting a programming that is too prescriptive about what type of results we want to be. Like, I don't think we should be saying this is the type of tech we want to see come out of Cochrane. I think that, that limits what, for me, innovation's all about. Innovation is about those accidental collisions. And I think we're more likely to have those accidental collisions leading to innovative products and solutions if you're not programming, trying to aim for a result. So I much, you know, prefer kind of where this is going. I hear, I hear kind of the concerns and, but, but I think we're stronger if we're opening this to the community and having those partners and not trying to be prescriptive in what the answer is. Um, so I, I, I'm more open to the Smart Starts than some of the other commentary I've been hearing. Um, and I know, I, I, I think it would be better to be, to be aiming for an innovation if you're going to come into that center and you've come in, you know, maybe it's a business, but then we're suddenly leveraging into a social enterprise solution, um that type of thing. So anyhow, I worry about the prescriptive approach because that runs contrary to the, the culture of innovation. So clearly we need to do some work on it and ta, and take some time. Um, but yeah, I just have a, a concern with that very premise, that we as a municipality know best how to uh pick a success in innovation.
Thank you, Councilor McFadden. Councilor Wilson.
Thank you. I just thought I'd add in a, a quick tidbit that as, as I listen to the table, I don't actually have a strong opinion about what should or shouldn't go on here. I've been, uh, I, I was very pleased when I originally heard that uh, um, I think it was Councilor Reed and the mayor went to Waterloo to kind of see if that's the guiding light, if that's what we're trying to get to, to, if that's our vision, that uh, that's the way we'd be going with this building. Um, I'm hoping, I guess, when we see Mr. Corman next time in a council meeting, that maybe we could hear a little bit more about it. I'd, I'd hope that uh his group had talked to somebody from the Waterloo community, especially somebody with knowledge about how the program started in the beginning would be really, that'd be useful to me. That'd be um very moving example for me of where we should be going with it, because frankly, as I listen to it, I, I see merit everything I hear here. Uh, Smart Start sounds interesting to me. The, the tech incubation thing sounds interesting to me. Um, so I guess I'd like to hear more about how, how Waterloo did their thing, how they got off the ground, and um if we're following that, that gives me comfort, I think, with how we move forward with, with this stuff. But I'm sure Mr. Corman has more to say on that when we do see him at a eventual meeting, so. I, I just had one other question about the crossing. If we're doing the ribbon cutting tomorrow, does that mean people are actually crossing the crossing tomorrow across the railway tracks?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Yeah, once the ribbon's out of the way, it'll be officially uh open and available to the community to utilize, so uh very excited about that. Um, it's been ready uh for the last couple of weeks, but uh we're uh excited to see it officially open.
Not to undersell that part of the project, just living here as long as I have, it's been so overdue, that crossing across downtown. Um, we've needed that for such a long time that uh I'm excited that uh that's ready to go tomorrow and excited to see it. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, Councilor Wilson. Back to you, Mayor Junang.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm hearing what everybody's saying about um trying to be an innovation center. I agree, Councilor McFadden. Um, the Smart Start program in my mind covers the rest of business. Um, I think it's important that this group has a conversation with our administration about what industry do we want to drive here? What primary industry do we want to have in Cochrane? That's what I think we need to build the Innovation Center around, the tech center. Um, and, and I use the example of wearable as really diving in. Every single um executive director of every single incubator that we visited in the Waterloo and Toronto area said, pick your thing. You got to be prescriptive on what it is that you want to attract, what type of business, because there are a number of incubators across the country. Um, when we were at FCM, Regina had one that was all egg-based. You had to be agriculture business to be able to get into their incubator, and that was their criteria. That was their first limiter. That's all I'm suggesting. We find our thing that we want, and then we hold fast to that. And if they don't fit our, our area, we send them to Platform and Calgary, who will have something like that, and they will in turn send their startups that don't fit their criteria but fit ours to us. So we're, we're all working together, that, and Councilor Reed kind of identified this appropriately earlier, where the tech individuals are collaborative in nature, and they build off of each other's energy and ideas, and then they zoom in and then they go and do their thing. Um, that's the environment we're trying to build. The pictures and the, the, the programming somewhat gets there. I'm not going to go back and repeat everything I thought, but um, uh, somebody I talked to recently that's successful in this in Cochrane said, make sure one of the criteria is that the person with the, with the idea is a full-time person. They're not, this isn't going to be a half-time job, a quarter-time job. This is their They're not, this isn't gonna be a half-time job, a quarter-time job. This is their dream. And they're willing to put their life savings into this dream and be in the innovation center or the tech incubator as their primary job. This is the commitment we need from these individuals that are going to be, that we're going to be subsidizing to get them off the ground to create our our industry here. Um so we need to be clear. This group needs to be clear on what it is that we want in our downtown, what industry we want to drive, not only industry. But what industry do we really want to drive? So I think that's an important uh delineation to make and uh. I think I've touched on all my points, other than the thing that you, the one of the pictures was the tape on the floor. It doesn't have to be um super technical. It's whiteboards and tape on the floor. Uh we're providing internet, a place to uh do business and. Uh if I go back to the analogy of the the two gentlemen that were, you know, two families, I should say, that were successful in Cochrane and Garmins created. This failed, started and failed in someone's garage because they were um. They had the great idea, they didn't have the space in which to attract financial funding, outsource funding. Not from us, but from um you know, people wanting to invest in their in their ideas. So to have a boardroom, a someone out front that's in a in a bathroom and somebody doing. Janitorial services like and keeping the lights on, that is what our chasm that we're filling. But we just need to define what what it is we're trying to attract to get the lead, so. Um in my mind too, I think we gotta be careful around those those boardrooms. With me, they're they're linked to the innovation side and that if they're signed out all week for. Um other uses that don't, that actually limit the incubator, then I think we failed again. So we need to be careful with how we step forward. Now, now I'm done talking.
Thank you, Mayor Janong. Counselor Fedejo?
Um I guess kind of listening around the table, um I I do understand the the need to be very. You know, well laid out as to what we're looking for there. I guess my only fear is that if we become too prescriptive. Do we have enough people to utilize that space or do we end up, you know, making it. Very narrow and then all of a sudden it's not really doing the job that we all want it want to see from it, right? So I don't know if there could be a revision period, maybe obviously we start off in a very prescribed way, but as we go forward. That then, you know, we as council can maybe sit down with yourself, Mr. Corman, uh Mr. Everybody on executive leadership and have that conversation because I'm I'm just scared that if we go too narrow. We cut off on actually allowing business to be successful and that's the whole point is that. If we if we only have a few people that are down there, we're not utilizing the space properly, we're again missing the mark, so. I just want to be careful that maybe we start off in a way and have some sort of uh whether that's six months or a year out. A revision to make sure that it is meeting the goals and it's uh it's actually setting up businesses for success, no matter who they are.
Uh Counselor Fedejo, if I can, our intent would be to report back to council through these committee of the whole and and other opportunities uh regularly, so. Uh very similar to the land use bylaw, we'll be back in front of you to provide you updates and uh let you know how things are going. So again, I I appreciate there's some additional work to do uh based on the feedback, but um we'll be back.
Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Counselor Fedejo. Counselor McFadden?
Yeah, I think for me, I. I'd almost like to prefer it's like, you know, a good plan today is better than a great plan tomorrow. Like, the building's there, you've got groups that want to be in there. And be innovative in their own space. Um and I think we can be clear that the use is gonna evolve. Like, it's our building. We can evolve it as we need to be, but if. You know, that that theme of innovation is about evolving and making mistakes and learning and picking yourself up and going and doing it again, and so. Um yeah, I just worry about like there's this, you know, this prescriptive and I think with COVID, like the world's changed. You don't, having a physical space isn't necessarily what it's all about anymore. It's. It's more about, you know, having those resources, somebody helping with a good business plan or connecting you to the right, you know, tech resources or being able to answer those questions, so. Um anyhow, lots for me to think of and I I thank the mayor for kind of raising it. Um I think like others, I kind of thought we were further down this path than we are, but um but yeah, I'd hate for us to. To to stall out waiting for the perfect thing that we're all in alignment with because at the end of the day, innovation and tech is about, you know, letting things happen, so. A little bit of slightly philosophy challenges here and so, Mr. Hyman, I apologize, you're not gonna get a nice clear answer to go and fulfill tomorrow.
No, I think it's been uh great feedback and uh feedback we needed to do earlier and uh should have done early. Uh but uh we'll uh take this feedback, review it and uh refine it and be back in front of you.
Thanks, uh Counselor Wilson?
Very quickly, I know we're not making decisions. This is just a discussion and committee of the whole. Um. Listening to the mayor's comments, he's he's won me over at least temporarily to hear. Um I think I'd be willing to take a leap leap of faith and make this a more narrow programming sort of thing and and see how that goes off the start and. If it is the disaster we're we're worried about, frankly, we would make changes, but. Off the start, that's a that's a leap I'd be willing to make and I'd be curious to hear more about Waterloo's example and. What Mr. Corman might have to say when he comes back to us at a future setting, so. Appreciate the discussion. That's that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Anybody else up here have any other comments? No? Um that leaves me with the uh the final word, fun part about uh being deputy mayor, I suppose. Um in terms of the vision and where I'd like to go, I think a lot of council is very much aligned and I'm aligned with a lot of council. Something that I really want to see here is like, I I always thought this should be the place. Where if you want to start a business, like this is just the door you walk in or the phone number you call, the website you go to. Right to the point that there should be like a like a sandwich board out front that says, wanna start a business, question mark? Come on in, here's our hours. And that person like tells you, here's how you register a company, here's the business account you open. Uh here's how you trademark things, here's how you make a website, here's what you need to incorporate, like all the basics for a business person, whether they want to. Make the next Garmin or they want to make a new plumbing company in Cochrane. I think that should be there and. I think one of the most important things we can offer through that service is the mentorship program. I was very happy to hear that that's on the slides. Um as somebody who's been going through the process of making a business over the past few years, I think mentorship is like number one. We are not gonna be able to find an executive director who can start a plumbing business or the next Garmin unless we want to pay some business consultant like a million dollars a year. So like, we need a really strong uh mentorship program, I think. And I think we need a good mentor recruitment strategy. One of the little ideas I've had in my mind, for example, is everybody who does business with the town of Cochrane, they get one of our contracts. We invite them, hey, like you're a local electrical company. Do you have an electrician who'd be willing to talk to other local uh tradespeople? And and like we need to have like a huge list of mentors from Cochrane, the whole Cochrane area of people who would. Meet with young and or old entrepreneurs uh who want to start a business. That's really what, that's where I see this and then. Uh like the mayor, I'd like to see a huge uh focus on tech. Um because that is something that we've identified as a strategic priority. We have a bit of a leg up on the whole region of uh tech industry. And we want want to move it forward, so I think that's my thoughts on the vision and where we're going. Um I do have some less rosy comments about where we are today. Uh honestly, I'm quite surprised that we're literally cutting the ribbon tomorrow and we don't know what's happening in this space. I don't know if I missed a meeting or I missed some emails, but I'm surprised to hear that like an executive director is now questioned. When we started this whole building, I thought that the whole plan was to get an executive director to build out a really thorough program. And when I saw this on the agenda for tonight. I expected that we were gonna have a presentation on what's starting and when and how we're hiring an executive director if we haven't hired one already. Um normally, I'm quite impressed with everything we do as an organization. We do things very well. I am not impressed at the fact we're opening up a state-of-the-art facility that is on Cochrane's headlines in the newspapers. And the innovation component of it, we don't even have a plan for it unless I I I feel like. A lot of comments have been very sugarcoated this evening, but I think a lot of people are thinking what I'm thinking, like what the heck? How do we not have the plan for the innovation hub? When this has been in construction for how long and we're supposed to begin the tour tomorrow? That is, I think, not very good. Um I could further elaborate on that point, but I think my my feelings there are clear. Um there's any, does administration or anybody else at the table have anything to say? Uh before I move on to the next agenda item. Mr. Hyman, do you have any further comments?
I have no further comments. Uh appreciate all the input uh from council this evening. Uh we'll uh review this and uh we'll be back before you shortly.
Okay, thank you. And then I believe uh we need a bio and cellphone break, so let's come back here ten minutes, um eight o'clock. We are technically two minutes earlier than the time that I noted we would come back. Uh are we live? Okay. Yep. That was the last ten-minute break you'll get from me. Six minutes moving forward. All right, we are live. Second part of tonight's uh exciting event. Let's move on to Pinky speaking about the major capital projects, fall twenty twenty-two update.
Um thank you. Uh good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Members of Council. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to provide you an update on our major capital project for this year. So the major projects that I'm going to highlight tonight uh in tonight's presentation are the ones that are um. Under the portfolio of the Engineering and Asset Services section. But before I move on, uh please allow me to first of all thank council. For all the support that you have provided to administration for us to be able to really advance all these major capital projects. And I also like to highlight and thank our hardworking and dedicated project managers, Greg Barcy. And very pretty, cause these are um, you know, like a project manager is handling very complex and sometimes very challenging projects. And I also want to go thank my colleagues from other from other departments. Um including our leadership team who have really provided a lot of support for us to be able to uh to be set up to succeed in. In our um delivery of all these capital projects. And I want to share with council that I've been in a lot of different organizations and I would. And I could say that the team spirit and the team collaboration in Cochrane is really. Uh a very exemplary and extraordinary, so I'm really happy to be part of this organization. Um so for our agenda, I will start off by providing um a list of completed major capital projects for this year. And then I will go through other major capital projects that are still underway and then end up with a conclusion and a time for question and answer. So there are three major capital projects that have been completed this year that I want to highlight for council tonight. So the first one is the um uh the project to relocate. the project to relocate underground water and sanitary pipe from the northeast corner to the northwest corner of Highway one A and twenty-two. So this is accommodate the ramp for the Highway one A and twenty-two interchange. That's going to be, of course, a project led by Alberta Transportation. So this project was completed in October of this year. The budget is budget for this project is seven point six million dollars and as of October twenty twenty-two, our invoiced amount is four point four million dollars. So I'm going to be talking mostly about invoice amount. And this is the official numbers that our finance department would also have in the reports, but more often the actual spending is actually higher than this. And but there's just no official number that I that would be appropriate for me to report to council for tonight's presentation. But I want to go say that our project managers is also tracking their actual expenditure versus the budget, the budget for the projects, just to make sure that we are not actually overspending vis-à-vis our capital budget. So I also want to highlight that for the seven point six million dollars, three point twenty-one million is funded by the town using utilities reserve and four point four one million is funded from the Canada Community Building Fund or formerly known as the Gas Tax Fund. So that's funded by the federal government. So this is a photo of the Highway and twenty-two utility relocation site. So this is looking at the northwest corner of the Highway one eight twenty-two where the new water and sanitary pipes were installed. So if you can look at this, this is approximately where those two underground pipes were actually installed. And they are now actually live and are actually servicing the community of Sunset. Okay, so the project site is currently being cleaned up by our contractor and is going to be turned over to the town in the next few weeks. So the next one I want to highlight is the fourth replacement of the Fourth Avenue Bridge. So this is the replacement of the old timber bridge to a more modern and steel structure that's going to last at least seventy-five years. And the total budget for this is eight hundred ten thousand dollars. And as of October this year, we spent about six hundred thirty thousand dollars. We'll end up really below after everything has been accounted for. Our expectation is that we'll end up below the budget of eight hundred ten thousand for this particular project. So these are photos of the Fourth Avenue Bridge replacement. This is actually already open as council would know based on our communication to our community. So the twenty meter bridge is is is, you know, again completely open. It's going to provide connectivity along Fourth Avenue over Brick Hill Creek. And this project actually went really went really quite smoothly. We were very lucky with the contractor. We really performed very well for this particular project. And so a big win for this project is we're able to complete this based on the schedule provided by Alberta Environment because this is actually the sensitive environment sensitive area. So so that is actually a big win for the project team. So the next project I want to highlight is, of course, we're talking about the station and Cochran Crossing. So so, you know, the the building is seven thousand seven hundred square foot in terms of size. And as Miss as Drew was saying, you know, this will contain the innovation incubator space. There's going to be a Cochran Information Center. It's going to be admin space, public washrooms and transit waiting amenity. So the town plaza would also include monuments, seating, bike storage and free public wifi and future public art. So there's also the crossing, which is basically connecting the provincial site with the with the site. So building and exterior has been completed substantially last month. And our total budget for this particular for this project is eight point two million dollars. And as of October this year, we've spent about we've invoiced six point eight million dollars. But if also actually you spend more than that, our projection is that we're going to go we're going to end up slightly below the eight point two million budget for this particular project despite, you know, some some challenges that we encountered in delivering this. So these are some of the photos. So you you have here the, of course, exterior photo and this is a drone photo of the the landscaped area. So most of the landscaping is actually done. The monument, however, because of some issues with supply chain, the monuments, the brickwork is the materials are here, but we didn't get the chance because of the changes in the weather to be able to install them. So we're going to be installing the the monument, the brickwork around the monument and also the signage in the spring of next year. Okay, so these are also some of the internal photos down here. Okay, so going now to other major capital projects that are underway for this year. I actually have five capital projects that I want to highlight for council tonight. So the first one is the Highway one A Central Avenue Improvement. So so this really started out at a good pace at the beginning of this year. However, due to some unexpected delays brought about by provincial regulations for us to to make the site safer. Not all in scope work is going to be completed this year. So completed work for two thousand twenty twenty are the following. So for Highway one A, we have expanded from two to four lanes from west of Third Avenue to west of Fourth Avenue. And we've also completed the paving of the second street as well as the street parking for the businesses there. And for Central Avenue, we have completed the two northbound lanes and two southbound lanes between Highway one A to Powell Street, including sidewalks on both side. And of course, the structural components of the retaining wall on Fourth Avenue is still ongoing. It's going to be completed by end of the month. So remaining work for next year, because of the delay, we will continue with the expansion of Highway one A from two lanes to four lanes west of Fourth Avenue to west of Fifth. And then we'll complete the Fourth Avenue realignment, including the retaining wall finishing and enhancement. So for the Fourth Avenue wall, there's going to be another another report that's going to council on Monday, just to follow up on the discussion from our last regular council meeting. And other landscaping and other minor works such as the concrete boxes to save for the median and central avenue is going to be completed next year as well. So the budget for this project is twenty point seven million dollars and we're tracking to keep within that budget. And as of October this year, we've invoiced sixteen point four million dollars for this project. So so these are some of the photos for this really exciting project. So you can see here, this is the the pathway on the north side of Highway one A. So this was recently completed. And you would and and please note there are really, you know, a good street lights, street lighting lighting here that would be able to kind of like really create a strong sense of place once you actually go down the big hill. And will align with the integration of downtown Cochran as well. So this is actually a view heading go us looking at the western part of Highway one A from the Big Hill. And this is a construction photo for the structural components of the Fourth Avenue retaining wall. So I also want to go highlight to council that we are now working with our contractor and Alberta Transportation to kind of like shut down this site. We're expecting that to happen this week. There's going to be more communication around the details of that for council and community in the next few days. But what what we really want is to be able to make sure that this site is going to be safe. You know, we're going to remove all temporary barriers and make sure there's enough lighting. And there's the signage, the signage is going to be very prominent to make sure that we can maintain this this site and also make it safe for the community as well during the winter time. So the next one I want to highlight is the Protective Services Building. So another major capital project, it is actually go this project is also going smoothly and we are tracking well for a July twenty twenty-three completion as planned. So this building is going to accommodate RCMP, victim services and the town's municipal enforcement staff. Total budget for this project, including building and land is twenty seven point seven million and we have invoiced twenty point five million based on our project manager's input is that we will be tracking within the budget of twenty seven point seven million, which is which is a great news story. Okay, so these are some of the more recent photos of the Protective Services Building. So about ninety-five percent of the exterior work is is done, especially the cladding. And landscaping is is done eighty percent. We we're going to go late on the side in the spring of next year. And then interior finishing are just being completed such as millwork or cabinets, painting and fixtures for plumbing. And those are some of the interior work that's being done for us to be able to then turn this over to RCMP so that they can actually start commissioning their programming and us also be able to complete the commissioning of the building. Okay, so the the next project is the Bow River Flood Recovery and Erosion Control. So this project came about because there was a damage, there was a lot of flood damage in the western terrace pond adjacent to the water treatment plant in twenty thirteen. So the work that the project team did was is supposed to upgrade and expand the west terrace storm pond to accommodate a bigger flooding event or bigger rainstorm event. And then we also upgraded the pedestrian bridge over the pond area. So we're targeting to substantially complete this in November of this year. There's a budget of two point two million provided via provincial grant and so far invoice is seven hundred sixty thousand dollars. So these are some of the photos. So this is actually, this was like late summer. So this is the upgraded pond, which is actually a wetland. So so the bigger capacity of this stormwater will allow us to be able to accommodate a bigger rainstorm or flooding event. And there was there's going to be enough capacity to actually treat the stormwater so that the water that will flow back to the river is actually higher quality. So this is a portion of the outfall and this actually directs towards the Bow River. You know, this will basically convey water from the pond, higher quality so that it will flow to the river and and not harm fish and, you know, yeah, living living organisms there in in the in the Bow River. So this is a picture of the concrete apartment for the new and upgraded pedestrian bridge. And also this this bridge actually is also able to accommodate emergency vehicles if there's a need for us to be able to accommodate them. So once, so the the contractor is actually installing the bridge in November. And then once it's done, then we can start commissioning this this new facility and it's going to be ready for the spring rainfall. Next year. The next one is the Jumping Pond Flood Recovery Erosion Control. Again, because of the twenty thirteen flood, there was significant erosion of the banks along the Jumping Pond Creek. So the the objective for this project is to restore the bank and install erosion install erosion prevention prevention measures along the Jumping Pond Creek. So target completion is Q three of twenty twenty-three. There was some additional work that we needed to do that wasn't completed this year. The budget of one point one million, again funded through provincial grants and as of October, so of October this year, we've actually invoiced about one million dollars. Again, we're anticipating this project to actually fall below the budget of one point one million dollars. So this is, you can see here the prevention, erosion prevention prevent preventive measures on on the west side of the Jumping Pond Creek. And this is actually the new pathway that we had to align on the western portion of the site. Because the old pathway actually was very prone to erosion. So as you can see, it's actually, we have to still pave this. And we just didn't have time because of some difficulties in in being able to get paving crews to be able to pave this on time. The plan of our plan is to install gravel here as soon as we get the opportunity so that people can still use this and and get rid of and avoid muddy tracks. And then as soon as spring comes in next year, we'll get the paving crews to actually pave this new pathway. Okay, so the last one is the CP Railway Crossing. So siding track removal and collaboration with CP at River Avenue, Central Avenue and Fifth Avenue crossings. So the budget for this project is eight hundred twenty thousand dollars. And as of October twenty twenty-two, we've actually invoiced about three hundred thirty thousand dollars. So some photos for this one is this is a photo of when construction crews are actually removing the siding track. And this is the picture of the 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 street actually rebuilt with asphalt. Okay, so so those are the projects. And in conclusion, I want to be able to say that major capital projects really support our new twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five Cochran Strategic Plan. And it aligns with a lot of the aspirations that council or committee have identified in terms of livability, open spaces and natural areas, vibrant economy and connectivity as well as identity. Twenty twenty-two remains to be a very challenging year in terms of supply chain issues and tight labor market. So the project teams actually really have have tried their best to make sure that they're, you know, the the teams are actually doing proactive procurement, being really, you know, thinking far ahead in terms of where to get the supply for them to be able to complete the projects on time. And, you know, some of the things that we really built on to make sure that we're advancing this capital projects on time and on budget are really close collaboration with our industry partners and leveraging our struck and our strong contractual agreements with our suppliers and contractors to make sure that even though there's some delay, we're not going to be, you know, we're not going to be penalized in terms of budget and in terms of some of the deliverables that's part of our contracts. And of course, one thing that we always wanted to do is really to provide up-to-date communication with our stakeholders like council, our community, and also internally for us to be able to make sure we're coordinating these projects in a very strong fashion. So so that's it, council, and that's the end of my presentation. Thanks for your attention and looking forward to questions, inputs and feedback.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Let's turn it over to councillor Reed to begin.
Just a a comment and a couple of questions and, okay. So first of all, thank you for your presentation. This was this has, as your as your conclusion, it said it's been a significantly active year for major projects and or capital projects in Cochran. And and what I like about it is that it, you know, that it builds on ensuring that we have a dynamic and thriving community. And so I appreciated that that you pointed out in your your report. I also recognize that 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 comes with challenges, right? An unprecedented supply chain issues and and labor shortages. But what I most appreciated about this was this report is this is this is exactly the major projects that we've as a council had identified as part of our strategic plan. And I I'll keep repeating it over and over again because I think it's so important that everything we do in the town needs to be drawn back to our strategic plan. Everything in our subsequent budget discussions is going to be drawn back to our strategic plan. And so I appreciate that that this has been done. The questions that I had were, you used the phrase significant significantly advanced, actually three times in your report. I wonder what what does it mean? Does it actually mean that we're ahead of schedule in terms of the of the particular project or is it just means that the project is being completed?
So so Mayor, councillor Reed, so what I mean by that is that this project are being advanced in recognition that, you know, like despite some of the challenges, we're actually tracking in terms of our planned schedule and within the allotted budget for this particular project. So
Significantly advanced means that it's on it's on
It's on track. It's on track. That's right.
The second question I had was, it's kind of a two-parter. You referenced that some of the projects are tracking in terms of expenses. I'm just wondering, are there any projects that that are have an additional expense because of of the the issues you've identified as challenges? And the supplemental part of that is that are there some projects that actually are under budget? And what might we expect with that under budget? And where do those funds go? Do they go back into the utility report or utility fund?
So so if a project, we realize later on, if we if a project is under budget, then it's up to us to go back to council and ask for additional budget for that. So but for some projects that actually actually follow the end of all the the tasks are delivered and there's actually extra money, we actually put that back and return that back to our coffers. So so for example, if it's coming from utilities reserve, if there's extra money at the end of the project after let's say the two two-year warranty period, then that's something that we tell our finance department and then they will they will then get take it back, either put it back in the reserve or depends on on what the finance department would like to do with that money. So it becomes available for other projects in general, I would say.
Okay, so no projects are over over spent at this point and there is some surplus in relation to some of the projects.
So I'd actually like to clarify the answer. When it comes to capital projects, we fund the budgeted amount, but we only would take that funding and fund the actual costs. So if the funding is X dollars from grants and so much from reserves, we'd only draw the same proportion even though the project comes in under budget. So it's not a matter of taking the money out and putting it back in. It's a matter of only taking out the amount we need to fund the actual project costs.
So if it's in a grant, then what do you do, Catherine? Do we do we pocket the difference?
We don't get to pocket that. What we do is that's now available to allocate to other projects that qualify under the grant parameters.
Okay, and would that come up in the budget discussion that we're about to have?
Yeah, that's a lot of the work that we do as part of the capital budget is we look at our uncommitted reserve balances. We look at our uncommitted grant balances as well as the debt availability and then we fund the capital budget before it comes to council. So all of that work's been done ahead of time and next week when we present information on capital, you'll get way a lot more detail on that.
Okay, good. There's one more comment if I could. So on the unnumbered Okay, good. There's one more comment if I could. Um so on the unnumbered page three, I think it is, or four. Um there's a reference to the uh due to the unexpected construction delays brought about by regulatory requirements and further enhanced the safety measures on site, blah, 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 blah. The a lot of people have said in town that they they're annoyed that the project has taken on uh such a long life and that there were periods of time where nothing was being done. And and I don't know that we've done a good job, I've speak now personally, about communicating that to the public that some of the things that happened, i.e. the kind of accidents and injuries that occurred on site further delayed it because the the province required us to put in some additional measures. And that that was the reason that there was this kind of downtime. And the pro- and the project has taken a little longer life than it might otherwise. Is that fair?
Yes, uh y- that that's that's fair, uh Councilor Reed. So there was like at least six weeks of downtime because um there was expectation for our contractor to actually provide a safety plan for the site. And until that was completed, we're actually not able to uh resume construction on the site.
So are those lessons learned in terms of being able to go forward? Like, again, there were some weeks there, literally weeks, where there were great weather. And we we thought construction would have been at its boom, but we were stalled because I'm assuming health and safety or some provincial body required us to do otherwise. And so are there lessons learnt in terms of being able to move forward? Hopefully, like the one A twenty two, we won't run into a kind of that kind of delay.
De- definitely. So one of the things we will be doing we'll be doing is going to have an internal discussion in terms of lessons learned. And um I don't think it's it's um you know, there there are some confidential uh aspects of what happened um during the investigation that I'm not um actually able to discuss here. But it's something that we are going to discuss internally and identify some lessons learned for us to be able to work better in the future with our contract with any contractor that we are um dealing with. So
I just wanted to be end where I began, uh following Drew's lead earlier tonight. And that is to say, I I think this has been an incredible year. I really appreciate the work of you and your colleagues in terms of this department. I don't know in past years if we've been able to accomplish as much as we have this this particular. But these projects are so meaningful to our community and make such a difference. And again, I cannot emphasize enough just how it drives back to our strategic plan. This is what council said it was going to do. This is what we're delivering on. I mean, this is a really great news story. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reed, for highlighting that. I really appreciate that.
Councilor Fedeck.
Thanks for the thorough report. I have one question and then I have some project, like specific project questions. Um in the overall budgets of each of these, is that with contingency built in to each of those?
That's right. There there are contingencies in all our capital projects, for sure.
Okay, so it's not we're not necessarily looking at expanding those numbers on top of unless we obviously run into some snags along the way, I take it?
That's right. And and those contingencies are actually based on industry practice as well, so.
Okay, perfect. And then so going back to kind of like specific specific items. Um with the station, six point eight million is kind of a we're invoiced at out of an eight point two million, maybe slightly lower budget. What is still left for that site, obviously, since we're opening it up tomorrow? Um I believe like there's some outdoor stuff that needs to still happen, but kind of what's making up that other million dollars um maybe still forthcoming?
Yeah, um um so there are really just very minor tasks that needed to be done for the building and also for the uh the the town, the the site itself. It's just probably a delay in terms of getting invoice from the contractor. And and our project manager really want to make sure that the invoice amount are really accurate. So there's just gonna there's just there's gonna be some gap as well in terms of the actual expenditure and when those amounts are are invoiced. But um as of today, our expectation is that we will be spending the actual spending is going to be slightly below the actual budget for this particular capital project.
Okay, that's that's good on that one. And you you summed up the one question I had is will the pylons eventually be removed off of uh off of the roadway? There's there's lots of pylons out there. Um but I I hear that you did say that that's going to be happening over the course of probably the next couple of weeks, once communication and stuff happens.
That's right.
Okay, that was good there. Uh and my only last question was regarding the Protective Services Building. I could have sworn that at one point it was like a twenty three million dollar project. And so I imagine the twenty seven point seven reflects land?
That's correct.
That's right.
Excellent. That's uh that's all I have. And uh I don't need to say it again. It has been a busy year. So it's good to see some of these things open and be full functioning.
Thank you, Councilor Fedeck.
Okay, excellent. Uh seeing no other lights, I'll turn it back to you. Do you have any final comments?
Uh no, I just really want to go thank council for your support. Um it's been a very challenging year, but it's also a very exciting year for a lot of capital projects. So we're just very happy to deliver all these projects for the community and for uh the organization. So thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you. Up to our last item of the public um committee of the whole meeting, our third quarter twenty twenty two finance report from Mrs. Van Cavma.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Nagel, Mayor Janong and members of council. I'm before you this evening to pr- uh to provide you with the third quarter report. And this is the report of the year that also projects where we think we'll end up using our crystal ball at year end. Uh the purpose of this is to provide information and no action is required on behalf of council, which is why we bring this to the committee of the whole meeting. Uh so our operating budget for twenty twenty two has total expenditures of sixty eight point two million dollars. Uh and the net cost or the tax requirement is thirty two point nine million. Sixty percent of our net cla- cost has been spent. So if you are three quarters of the way, you normally would expect to be at seventy five percent. So we're at sixty percent, which uh gives you a little bit of a hint that uh we're probably going to end up in a surplus. So there's two components to the calculations. Uh there's the revenue trends and then there's the expenditure ones. So the first one to talk about is the revenue trends. Uh so eighty one percent of nonutility and non-tax revenue has been collected to the end of September. And seventy six percent of our utility revenue was collected as at the end of September. So that's trending ahead of what one would expect at that point in the year. Uh the reason for that is growth continues. Um we try and estimate what we think the revenue is going to be. Um but as everyone's aware, growth has continued nonstop uh and at unexpected amounts at the time when we were putting the budget together at this time last year. Uh another thing, so new effects like development permit revenues, subdivision revenues, uh that type of stuff. But resale also has an effect. So as we saw quite a bit of properties changing hands, that generates tax certificate revenue. So every time a property is going to be sold, there's tax certificates that are pulled and that revenue is trending above where we anticipated because of the resales. There's also a continued demand for town services as more people are moving into town. Uh and that uh our revenue trends has also been impacting our permits, our fines and our user fees. So looking at the projections for revenue to December thirty first, uh we're anticipating uh about one point two million dollars more of revenue than we had budgeted for in twenty twenty two. Uh and in what areas are we seeing that? Uh we're anticipating permit fees of eight hundred and twenty thousand more than budget. Our franchise fees and other general revenue. There's a typo in the council report. It said it was three hundred thousand dollars more than budgeted. It should be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. Uh so I apologize for that error. Uh so we're anticipating that will be higher by that amount. Uh the ranch house has had a banner year for catch-up weddings for all the times that people couldn't get married during COVID and other events. Uh so their rental fees are trending, we anticipate ninety thousand dollars more than budget. Uh also, as we have uh something called supplemental taxes. So properties that were not complete as of December thirty first of twenty twenty one only were billed on what their condition was as at the end of the year. But once they get occupancy during the year, then they get a supplemental tax for the value between what it looked like at December thirty first and what their finished house looks like. So that supplemental tax revenue was seventy thousand dollars more than what had been budgeted. Uh that tax certificates I mentioned, it's a hundred thousand dollars over. That's what we're anticipating. Uh and then this is offset by a decrease in our fine revenue. Uh so we're anticipating that our fine revenue is going to come in about a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars less than what was budgeted. So that's revenue. So the other half of the picture is costs. So what are we seeing? We're seeing decreased costs due to staff vacancies. Uh supply chain issues and manufacturer delays are delaying us being able to complete all of the things that we plan to do when we plan to do them. Uh some costs that have increased, the seniors tax rebate program, we talked about this a few weeks ago, how that's been oversubscribed. Uh and we had strategically taken debt for the Protective Services Building sooner than we had budgeted for because of rise quickly rising interest rates, which meant we had debt repayment that we needed to do in twenty twenty two that we hadn't originally budgeted for. So seventy percent of expenditures have been spent as at the end of September as compared to what would anticipate to be seventy five percent. So where do we think our costs are going to project to by the end of the year? We're thinking that we will be about one point five million dollars under budget in our expenditures. So what does that made up of? So salaries, wages and benefits for new positions. So we had uh council was very generous in uh providing money for us to be able to hire positions. At the time that we uh passed the budget last year, we'd explained this would take about eighteen months in order to hire all of those positions. Also, when we budget for positions, we have to budget for them for a full year because that's what the impact will be on future years. Although we didn't and couldn't hire all of them effective January first of this year. So all of that added together is we're anticipating to be nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars not spent yet for the new positions. We also have uh positions as is normal. Uh people leave for other opportunities and we have times when those positions are vacant. Or perhaps you have an incumbent being paid at the top of the salary grid and the new person comes in with less experience and their compensation is lower than the incumbent. Uh their savings for those two things that tie to existing position vacancies of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Our contracts are anticipated to be seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars under budget. And of that, five hundred thousand is under for the RCMP contract. Uh repairs and maintenance across the organization, we think will be about ninety thousand dollars under. Uh advertising and publications, about a hundred and five, the T and then all of those savings uh is offset by forty five thousand dollars more for the seniors tax rebate program and the seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in debt repayment that wasn't budgeted for. So all of that, where do we think we're going to be looking at the crystal ball uh at the end of the year? We anticipate that we will have about a two point seven six five million dollar surplus. Just under half of that's from revenue, just over half of that is from savings and expenditures. What does that mean though? Uh two point seven six five is four percent of our budgeted expenditures. So looking at it that way, uh because as a municipality, we cannot budget for a deficit. So we have to make sure that when we're budgeting, that we don't run the risk of running into a deficit. Uh so a four percent of expenditure surplus is not unheard of. It is in line with sort of what municipal other municipalities experience. Uh and the actual amount of the surplus obviously won't be determined until we've concluded the year end and we have act- all the actuals in. Uh and so that comes to you when we bring you the audited financial statements at the end of April. And at that time, council directs where any surplus would be allocated to. Uh but what this does do and the reason why we wanted to make sure we brought you the third quarter report prior to budget deliberations is that you have this information because it can provide you some flexibility uh during the budget deliberations that are coming up. So that's operating. The other part is capital. Uh Ms. Dela Cruz gave you quite in-depth information on quite a few of the capital projects, at least the major ones. So I'm not going to sort of repeat what she said. Uh but to tell you a little bit more of the story on the capital budget. Uh so we uh council approved twenty nine point two million dollars in capital projects as part of the budget process last year for twenty twenty two. Since then, during quarters one and two, council had a few resolutions to approve a couple of more capital projects uh that totaled five point one seven million. So that brought the total twenty twenty two capital budget to thirty four point four million dollars. When you add to that the fifty two carry forward capital projects that weren't complete as at the end of twenty twenty one, we have a total of ninety one capital projects that are approved and outstanding. Uh and that totals a total budget of just under a hundred and seventy six million dollars. So of the hundred and seventy six million dollars, we've spent just shy of seventy percent of that amount. And of the ninety one projects, thirty five are complete or nearly complete. Uh just to let in your package, uh we heard the feedback at the end of the quarter two report about you had desire to have the capital report or the capital detail give a little bit more information uh as far as verbiage and a little less information as far as numbers because it was uh too much numbers. Uh so we've revamped the report. Um and we are happy to hear if council feels we're heading in the right direction or if we're not quite there yet or we've gone totally the wrong way. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thanks for the presentation. Let's kick things off with Councilor McFadden.
Okay, great. So you're doing an excellent job in wrapping up our meeting with like good news stories. So thank you. Um you know, it's always great to celebrate um what we're looking at for, you know, a surplus. Um I just had some questions, just give me the story on just some variances on your nine months ending report. Um and you explained, I think, the general revenue, um where that's all coming from, and that's a good story. Um can you give me the story on economic development? If I'm reading this right, it went over budget. And then it's a small, small, small variance, but what the story is with the Community Resource Center as well?
I I'm sorry, the the which?
The Community Resource Center.
Okay, let me find that.
And I'm sure there's a simple, it's just when it's like a thousand percent variance. I'm curious.
So I have the Community Resource Center at a budgeted net cost of negative two thousand. And we're projecting them to not have any variance at the end of the year. Like, we're anticipating them to come in at that projected net cost of just shy of two thousand.
So yeah, I just don't understand how that happens. Like, how do they have a negative budget?
Right, which means they're not contrib- they're actually contributing? I'll look into that and get back to you. How does that sound?
Okay, that's cool. And then I lost it. And then economic development looked like it had a variance too that I didn't understand.
Okay. So I have economic development coming in at a net cost of two hundred and five thousand and we're projecting them to come in on budget.
On budget?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just lost it. I was reading it that it was above budget, but all right. Okay, anyway, I'll look into it again. I've just lost it off my screen here. But um yeah, no, thank you for the good news story. It's it's great to see, you know, big picture from our capital projects to a lot of the different initiatives moving ahead. Um that, you know, at this point in the year, we've got a really good story to tell. So thank you for your part and your team's part in doing that.
Thank you. And Councilor McFadden, if after the meeting you have any questions once you've looked at it, please feel free to send me an email and I'd be happy to look into it and and provide some more answers and I'll make sure that all of council gets them.
Sure, I'll take you up on that. Thank you.
Excellent. Mayor Jan.
Yeah, thank you. Um I appreciate the Q three report prior to budget deliberations. Um so great work on your team rushing that or whatever you had to do to get it.
It was a bit of a rush, yep.
But uh we appreciate that. Um and it is good news, as Councilor McFadden has pointed out. Um but I think we need to, I appreciate we're probably already doing this, but the messaging around this is specifically with all of the uh how do I put it, media around the uh budget and the proposed draft budget and the numbers in there. I think we need to do a good job in saying what this surplus means. Uh and if I break it down into two things, um we were busier than expected.
Yes.
And we spent less.
Correct.
So I think we need to put it in those types of terms to people. Um being busier doesn't mean, you know, and I can see the headline that we're, I'm not even going to write it for them.
Yeah, thanks.
Um it would be negative. Um I this is this needs to be told as a good news story that we we under budgeted on things because A, we can't um over budget and then come in with a deficit as you've already outlined. But the fact that um the town departments were busier to the tune of one point two four million dollars. Um and I think you've outlined it well in your presentation and where um there were certain tax, not not tax areas, but revenue generators that but revenue generators that people paid for, user pay services that contributed to that.
Yes.
So the other side, if I'm going to be pessimistic about it, is that, well, then you shouldn't have budgeted so much for the other side of things and the operating. But no, we are actually being good stewards with your money, and we spent less. And I think you also did a good job in outlining that, too, with taking debenture payments on later in the year. Obviously, you talked about the staffing and that those positions are there and we're funding them, but we didn't fill them all on January first, going through the year to do that. So I guess my question is, how are we going to deliver the messaging of this to the public?
Yeah, I believe that we're working with the communications team to make sure that that information is put out to the public. Also, you know, by having this meeting streamed and trying to make sure that in our presentation, we're making it clear that the revenue is things that we were busier than we anticipated. We could have just as easily have been not as busy as we anticipated. And then we'd be scrambling to find a way to make up for that revenue. We also have run into supply chain issues, which has impacted our ability to spend to the things we thought. No one knew that we would have this level of supply chain issues and delivery delays. And all of that has impacted all of those things. And the savings with the staffing is things we knew about at budget time. And we had said it's going to be an eighteen-month process. We're not going to be able to hire a hundred percent of the positions January first for the whole year. So that's something that's not unexpected. Remembering, though, that those new positions, quite a bit of the funding was coming out of reserves. So we wouldn't draw from the reserves for those positions until we actually have the positions in place. And we wouldn't draw from the reserve for the whole year. We'd only draw from the reserve the amount we needed to cover those positions for the period of time they were actually in place in twenty twenty-two. So I know your question is, how would we message this? That is the message. One is these statements and this presentation this evening to council in this public forum, but also working with communications to see, is there a media release that would be beneficial to make sure that we have the message out there to say it's four percent of a total budget of just shy of seventy million dollars? Like, it's not out of line.
Yeah, but I guess my point is, I understand that, and that's great. I don't think everyone in the community understands it in those terms. I think we need to say we were busier than expected and we spent less.
Correct.
And I don't mean to make it sound trite, but I think that's, that's how we need to communicate this message with people that we have professionals that work for the town of Cochrane, and they professionally handled the resources that you gave us last year. And it turned out this way. So I don't know how else to say it. I'll just stop there. But the other thing is, and you mentioned this, that the surplus will be added to, the surplus discussion will be added to our budget deliberations next week?
Yeah, so, you know, normally council's discussion in any detail happens at the end of April when we know what the actual surplus is. But knowing that there's going to be a surplus and knowing that budget deliberations are next week, the whole purpose was to bring you the Q three so that you had this projection, so that if council wants to make any changes to the proposed budget, this may be a tool that council has in their toolbox.
Perfect.
Yeah.
That's, that was my point. Thank you.
Councilor Reed?
Actually, it was the mayor's last point that, that I was going to emphasize as well. I think the timing is perfect, although I'm more cautiously optimistic about your surplus comment in terms of our upcoming budget discussions. But it does seem like a good news story in that sense. And and I'm anxious to get into that, and I'm sure other members of council are to talk about that. So having made that comment, the question I had then was on the RCMP line. Can you just add a little color to that?
I'm going to ask Ms. Low to answer that if possible.
Sure. So the RCMP in twenty twenty-two, we budgeted for the potential for the retro pay invoice with respect to the contract that they negotiated. We've not been invoiced for that payment as of yet, so that's part of that variance, offset, obviously, by the debt that we decided to take in twenty twenty-two for the Protective Services Building. So there's, there's some offsetting. So you don't see the full amount reflected in the variance as of yet. And then there were a couple of positions, obviously, throughout the year that we only get invoiced if the position is filled. So if we have twenty-three funded members and there's only twenty-one available, then we don't pay for the other two. So there's some variables there.
Thank you. Now, I guess one other, I guess one other question then. On the, the ranch house, and so you indicated that the wedding season actually added, added a lot of revenue to that. How will that, I forgot, looking at the budget book, how does that parlay into next year in terms of their projection?
Yeah, sorry, Ms. Low.
I would suggest that we are being cautiously optimistic in our revenue projections for next year. We know that this year is a bit of an anomaly. There were many people waiting for the opportunity. But there is also a focus on expanding corporate use of this facility. So certainly, we can get into more of that detail next week when we're in deliberations. But we are being cautiously optimistic. This is a, this is an outside of the norm year, I would suggest.
Thank you.
Great. Councilor Fedejo?
I really have one quick question. Under community grants, budgeted net cost three forty-one eight nine five, actual net cost two eighty-three. It looks like there's no year-end variance. I'm just curious of, are these grants that people haven't, we haven't paid out yet, or?
It's so, the budgeted net cost is three forty-one eight ninety-five. We're projecting that the net cost will be three forty-one eight ninety-five. So we're projecting there to be no variance, that we will pay out all of the community grants.
Gotcha. So the actual net cost is just where you were at this particular point of time, I take it?
Correct, yes.
And kind of going back onto what Mayor Janong was saying about the good news story, is there any place that the surplus cannot be used? Because I think when that story goes out, people just assume that we have this pot of money and it could be, it could be put on to whatever we kind of magically want it to. But is there something out there in a press release that you can say that, you know, we as council, yes, we can allocate the funds, but it absolutely cannot be used for X, Y, Z programs, if that makes sense?
It can't be used for Klein dollars, meaning we can't cut a check and send it back to the taxpayers.
Okay. And just, just to make sure that that is probably clear, because I think that some people, that will come up in conversation.
One thing to be aware of, and this will become more clear next week. We have a lot of really great capital projects coming down and, and not too far. And it's going to put a strain on our reserves and, and our debt. I think there's a bit of that in the budget book. So having these surpluses allows us to have some more financial flexibility and ability to meet some of the things that council would like to do in their strategic plan. And it takes funds to do that. So surplus is good news because it does provide council with flexibility. It's just you'll have to decide where to put it. But no, we can't, that, I would say the only limitation is we can't refund people the money. We can put it in reserves, which can offset future tax increases or future reserve contributions that might otherwise have had to be made.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? I would add, I think the surplus is great news. I'm actually not that concerned about the public being upset about this because, you know, what's actually bad news is a deficit. You know, and this is the opposite of that. So this, I think most people read the headline, there's a surplus, they say, oh, good, we have extra money. And, and I think the one thing I'd actually ask administrations that we pass that message, not just on the community, but all the way through the organization, through our different levels of management, all the way down to the boots on the ground, that thank you for not spending your whole budget. I know in some organizations, there's a culture of, well, if it's in the budget, you better spend it. And I'm really glad that culture has not developed here, that people are giving back money that they don't need, obviously choosing to make cheaper decisions than previously decided, and not just wasting money. And it's appreciated on behalf of the taxpayers. So please let all of our managers and staff know that their surplus is awesome.
Thank you.
That's it.
Yeah, the scary part about a deficit is you have to make it up the next year. Like, you have a very short period of time to fix that. So that is a bad news story.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any final comments, Catherine?
No, thank you for the opportunity, though.
Okay, great. Well, that brings us to the end of our public committee of the whole meeting. We'll be moving in camera. There will be no decision coming out of this. So I believe we are turning off the live stream. Goodbye to our viewers. We have motion to go in camera. Let's, do we need to vote on that? Yeah, I think we do, yeah. Vote on that? Approved. We're going in camera.